Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Linell, Chair of the City of Nashua's Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the April 13th, 2021 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the Zoning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu because of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and extended by Executive Order 2021-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, we are video conferencing utilizing the Zoom application for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashuahnh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to abutters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at nashuahnh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent impracticable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as has been identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. They may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access or by telephone. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments for future meetings via email to the Planning Department email, planning@nashuahnh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, P0 Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Zoning Board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for variances. I don't think we have any special exception applications at this time.
We do.
Oh, we do. Excuse me. All right. Thank you, Kate. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Linell. I am the Chair. We have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who is the Vice Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. We have Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. So we have all five full members of the Board present. We don't have any alternate members in attendance, as far as I can see. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, zoning coordinator, and Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. Ms. McKay.
I am present in my home office, and I am alone.
Mr. Courier.
I'm present at home, alone.
Mr. Boucher.
I am present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Mr. Shaw.
I am present, and there is no one in the room with me.
And I am present, Steve Linell, and there is nobody in the room with me. There are no alternates tonight, so... Mr. Falk, are there changes to the agenda? I know we have a rehearing request that will go first, but are there any other changes?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Falk actually left City Hall to go home and see if the connection would be better. As far as I'm aware, we hear rehearing requests after the cases.
Oh, we do? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Poirier. Somehow I missed that. Okay. So we will start with first case, which I will read into the record. The owner is United Greek Orthodox Church. Applicant is Mark Cloutier, Parish Council President, Address 500 West Hollis Street. Sheet E Lot 71, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 240, to allow a licensed childcare center within the existing church building. This is in the R9 Zone, Ward 5. Is there somebody here to present this case? Whoever, if somebody's speaking, they're muted.
Yep. Sorry about that. Had two mutes I had to hit there. Yes, this is Mark Cloutier. I'm President of the Parish Council at St. Phillips. And a few months ago, Austin came to us with a proposal to utilize some of our space for a licensed childcare facility. And especially in these days of COVID and these days of reduced attendance at church, it would be beneficial to St. Phillips with this additional income and beneficial to Austin Matt for income for him as well. So we've started, he started the process of initial licensing inspections, which have all been positive, fire inspections, et cetera. So far, nothing has come up that is a showstopper that can't be addressed fairly easily. We do need to get a variance, I understand, to the residential zoning that the church is under, which in hindsight, I kind of wondered how we ever put a church in residential, but that decision was done when I was in elementary school 40 years ago. So I don't know the history of that. But we are looking for whatever permissions are required to allow Austin to operate the daycare. What Ms. Poirier is showing right now shows the traffic flow that as you come in from West Hollis Street, enter the church, we have an oval in front of the church that allows easy drop-off for children. The entrance actually is the one right there. They would be coming in either that one or just the other side of that grassy area. We have two entrances that basically that wing that connects the two larger parts of the church. You have the hall on the very west end. You have the school classrooms there in the middle. And then the normal or church proper is on the very eastern end. So Austin will be utilizing at the beginning probably two classrooms on the, I guess that's the north side of the wing, basically the side facing that grass courtyard. And basically, it's nothing, no external construction other than a fence that we put around, a playground in the area just a little bit west of the hall and towards the backside of the property. Other than that, if there's any questions, I can hand it over to Austin for a little more description if needed.
Yeah, I've got it. I was just talking with Steve Adams today about what they're trying to...
One moment, please. Mr. Cloutier, I forgot to ask you. For the record, would you please give your address?
Oh, yes. Well, the address of the church is 500 West Hollis Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
And is that, I believe we asked for your personal address.
Okay, and that's fine, too. I'm at 5 Butternut Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
Okay, and Mr. Matt, if you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Austin Matt. I live at 10 Polyquin Drive in Nashua. And I think Mark summed it up pretty well. I could touch on the five points of law if that would be helpful as well.
If you may wish to do so, go ahead.
Okay, so the first being that it's not contrary to public interest. In fact, working families need high-quality options to send their kids so that they can go off and work without worrying about the physical, social, emotional, cognitive well-being of their children. So in that case, it's very much in public interest to have a Montessori school in Nashua, of which there are none currently. The proposed use would observe the spirit of the ordinance as well because in Table 15-1 in the Land Use Code section, it says that childcare facilities are not allowed as the principal use of the building. And this would not be the principal use of the building. It is a church. We're simply renting out existing space within the church. That was built, this portion of the building was designed to hold classes. So we're just using the building as it is. And it would grant the third point of law. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by allowing them productive use of the existing property, which otherwise remains vacant during the week. And it allows them, as Mark mentioned, an additional income stream for their church community. The proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because there are no permanent changes being made, no buildings. We don't need to put up any new buildings or any new structures other than the fence that he mentioned. There will be a negligible change in traffic coming off and on West Hollis Street. This traffic does not coincide with the traffic of the high school as well. Their bell schedule would be different from ours. And we have substantial parking as well to more than accommodate our needs. The immediate abutters to the south as well. So there's a road separating their properties from the property of the church. And also, because of the topography of the land there, where the kids will be playing outside is set much lower than their properties. And there's all that tree coverage as well. So they might not even notice that there are children there. So I can't see how this would diminish the property values of the surrounding areas. And in terms of literal enforcement of the ordinance, the last point of law, again, the law states that a childcare facility cannot be the principal use of the building. And this wouldn't be the principal use of the building. In other scenarios, within a residential district, within a residential zone, childcare centers are allowed to be run out of homes. On a case-by-case basis as well, schools are allowed within residential zones, which are both similar to what we're doing. Our issue is just that it's not the principal use of the building. And we feel it's reasonable as well to be able to use the vacant space within the church during the week. And I guess one last point to make is that just across West Hollis Street to the north and just across Main Dunstable Road to the east is a park industrial zone. And in those areas, childcare centers are allowed without a zoning variance. So we're nearly surrounded, but we just clipped the edge of the zoning, the residential zone there.
Thank you. Are there any Board members that have questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw.
I just wanted to know, you stated in the application that the plan is to start with 14 students. Is there any sort of maximum that you would cap out at that you could speak to?
So we had someone from licensing from the state come down to look at the space. And they said that the space, the absolute maximum of all the classrooms, there would be 55 children.
Do you foresee trying to do that full use?
Over a few years, yes, but definitely not within the first three.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Courier. You had a question? You're muted, Jack.
There we go. The mute kept coming back on. Mr. Matt, I was just wondering, what's your role with Montessori? Are you operating these facilities now? And is this moving from somewhere, or is this going to be new students altogether? And I also wasn't familiar with Montessori school. If you could just give me a quick walkthrough of that.
Yeah, so I guess to sum it up quickly, I have a master's degree in education, and I currently work in a Montessori school down in Newton. And this would be a new school, so new students were not moving from anywhere. And I guess the Montessori approach is all about giving children the tools that they need to be independent. Montessori acknowledges that as human beings, we are primed to learn, like we want to absorb information from the environment. And if you can create the environment, if you can establish an environment that enables children to do that, they will do it. So it's student-centered, and it also addresses the many different biological and emotional needs that young children have.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Not seeing anybody. Okay. Is there anybody present? Oh, Ms. McKay. Yep. You have a question?
Yes, sorry. Mr. Linell, it came to me as you were winding up speaking. Mr. Matt, will, and I remember this school on Coliseum Ave. I'm familiar with Montessori schools. Will the school address also special education or children with special needs? Or is this just for typical children? Cognitively typical and developmentally typical?
Yeah, so what's interesting about that is Maria Montessori sort of started to develop her method in a school for children. They weren't using the word autism, but now we think it was for children with autism. And she sort of figured out that that method actually works really well with typically developing children as well. So I have worked with atypically developing children, and I am definitely open to it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other Board members have additional questions? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is there anybody present with, would like to speak in favor of this application?
Looks like we had some comments in chat, looks like, from Ms. Anna Romshuev. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
I see the comments.
She would like to chime in.
I was just, I wanted to just chime in to give a little bit of a background on a Montessori method.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Anna Romshuev, 9 Massasoit Road, Nashua, New Hampshire. I have a child who went through a Montessori system. It is very widely used in Europe. We, as their member of the Board mentioned, we used to have one in Nashua. It is a spectacular system that recognizes and treats children and meets children at their best on their level of the development. And the best part about it, it is a nurturing environment where the children are not separated onto the higher advanced, lower advanced. It's all ages together where they're more developed children actually have an interaction with the children who need a little bit more help. And it is amazingly nurturing environment. So I would say that Nashua absolutely needs Montessori school again. I had the pleasure of having my daughter going through it, and many, many children in our neighborhood went through the Montessori school at Coliseum Street, and it is sorely missed.
Thank you. There anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Okay, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Mr. Chair, I said none.
I don't see any there either. And we did not receive any correspondence regarding this application that I can remember. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, do you have comments?
My only comments are that I am familiar with Montessori. It is a welcoming environment. And I remember it from Coliseum Ave. And parents lined up pretty much to get their children into this particular school system, which is very highly regarded. And I am absolutely in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Obviously, I wasn't familiar with Montessori, but from the points of law, I think that this application meets all the points of law. I'm in support of it. I'd like to point out that I think it's a uniquely good location. Granted, it's in the R9, but we know this is right there at the intersection of 5, and it doesn't impact any neighboring homes or neighborhoods. I'd like to say, there's some older churches in town that have no parking and are in an area that I think would be totally unsuited to have a school there, not the case with this location. I think it is well-suited for it, meets all the criteria, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm also in support of it for the reasons my colleagues have stated.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application for the reasons that my colleagues have stated.
Thank you. And I am also in support of the application for the reasons my colleagues have stated. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for the United Greek Orthodox owner, Mark Cloutier, Parish Council President, applicant, 500 West Hollis Street. Sheet E Lot 71, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 240, to allow a licensed childcare center within the existing church, R9 Zone, Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, the property is in an R9 Zone, but it is noted that it's a large piece of property. The church already has existing infrastructure to handle the daycare center. And also, again, noted that it is on a major thoroughfare at West Hollis Street, and there are several other type schools and facilities similar in the area. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? No? Okay. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Linell, also vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your use variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. If you have any questions, please contact Mr. Falk, who I see has joined us at the City Planning Department.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We'll move on to case number two. Owner, Daniel Tyne and Jody Grant, Address 15 Dudley Street, Sheet A Lot 63, requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-264, to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 71.6% proposed, to construct a detached 30-foot by 30-foot single-story garage. And two, from Land Use Code Section 190-192, Section C, to exceed maximum driveway with 24 feet permitted, 24 feet existing, and additional 20-foot wide driveway proposed for total width of 44 feet. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Yes.
Daniel Tyne, 15 Dudley Street.
Thank you. Please proceed.
What we're proposing to do is build a 30-by-30 residential garage on our property. We have 24 feet between the lot line to the right side of Jason Abutters. And as far as the driveway is concerned, if that is an issue, I can take out the other driveway. I just wanted to get one driveway in before I took out the other one. And that's the only reason is that. And as far as the usable accessory building space, this is only a thousand-foot square foot ranch. That would limit me to a ridiculously small garage. And it's only just a packard house, and there's going to be no business or anything like that.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
Yes, a question for the applicant. Looking at the driveway or proposed driveway, I should say. And I guess I was struggling a bit with that, but looking forward to hearing your testimony tonight. I was just wondering, with your thought about the potential of eliminating the other driveway, were you still going to use the other garage? Or was that going to be kind of framed? Or was that going to be kind of framed in as a house? Or just what was your plan?
Well, that would be framed in this living space. And the primary driveway would be the proposed one. But I do park my boat on that side of the house. That's, I guess that's the only reason. And like I said, I don't want to have no driveway.
Right.
The old garage will be our new, will be living space.
The old garage will not, it's not a garage now, actually. It's a shop. So it's, but it is where we pack our cars.
Right. Just like if if the 30 by 30 garage were approved, and if you had like the full 24 width driveway in front of that garage, do you, would your expectation that you'd be parking, using that garage and parking over there? Or would you still be wanting to park in front of, you know, the current shop, we'll call it?
No, I would probably use the new, the proposed driveway as the main driveway.
Okay. All right, well, that that helps me out with my question. So thank you very much.
The existing driveway, if if it was left in place, would be used mainly just for access to the side of the house.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Shaw.
The other thing I just wanted to explore with you is that I think you're probably aware that if you were to attach this garage to the house, that you wouldn't have this accessory area issue that you're need to take care of. But I'm assuming that based on where that attachment would have to be to the existing house, that it's probably not practical from a layout or connection space. But it would just be helpful for the board to hear that and understand why you've chosen to keep the garage detached and, you know, how that would be your decision.
As you say, it would be problematic to have access and egress from the garage. Also, there's two bedrooms on the end of the house. So we don't want to eliminate those or extend the house or anything like that. And being detached, I think, I thought it would be benefit taxes. I don't know, to be honest with you. If we attach it, I wasn't sure about the tax implications. So I thought it would be cheaper if it was detached. But I don't really have any intention of attaching the garage.
Yeah, I assume that bedrooms were probably what was going on there, and that's why that wouldn't make sense.
Exactly right. I'd have to go all the way through them, and it would be, it would be problematic.
And the board doesn't consider tax implications to the city in our decision here. I don't know which way that would go either, quite frankly.
I honestly don't know either. But I assume being detached would be beneficial in the tax sense. I don't know.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Boucher.
Just a clarification, and I'm sorry to just have you repeat that. You mentioned that you would still be using the existing driveway or that space to store a boat? Or is that going to just be relocated to the other side of the house near the garage? Just trying to understand what would happen if this board were to approve just the new driveway? And I think you would be required to remove the old driveway. I'm just trying to say whether or not you'd still be using that space to park a boat or not.
Well, we don't park the boat there. It's actually next to the house. It would just be access to park the boat there. So the only, when we bring the boat in and out. So I wouldn't really require a driveway for that. As you can see, next to the garage, there's, there's a little space on that side by the driveway.
Yeah.
That's where I parked the boat. And it would only be for access to the boat.
And I think it's confusing too, because that picture is a little bit older. It's actually showing our old boat that we used to park in the garage, but we've actually moved it so that it's in between, like it's actually next to our house as opposed to on the driveway. So the concern with, you know, having to move the driveway is also a concern of cost. You know, that that's for us is it's not going to be our primary driveway. We're not going to, in general, use it for, you know, parking cars, accessing the house or anything like that. It's more a concern for us that the cost of removing it at this time, especially with COVID and all the prices.
Mumbo prices.
With everything to build the garage, we're struggling, you know, with that. And to have the addition of having the cost to remove the driveway piled on top of that would be very difficult for us.
Excuse me, you are Jody Grant?
Yes, I am, sorry. And I live at 15 Dudley, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the boat is actually, you can see in that photo, the boat is is actually not currently where this picture shows. It's right underneath those two windows. Yes, right where the cursor is. Yep.
Correct. So your preference would, if you had a preference, and I'm just, you know, asking it, the preference would be to leave the existing driveway in place? That would be your preference?
The preference would be to leave the driveway in place, like I said, mainly for, you know, for to save us and having to pay to remove it. But again, our main goal is for to have that garage and that new driveway. So we're willing, obviously, to concede to whatever the decisions you guys may make.
If it's an issue.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's more to access the boat when we need it. There, you know, really won't be anything parked there on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Yeah. I've also sort of questioned about about the boat story. I mean, looking at the neighborhood, although I did see a number of houses with wide driveways, I didn't see any with two driveways. And it would really be a little bit odd to have this driveway that just leads up to the house, but not not to a garage. So I, I personally would, I would be leaning in favor of asking that that old driveway be removed. But that's, that's my opinion. Are there any board members with additional questions? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Okay, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Mr. Chair, I see none.
I see none, and we did not receive any correspondence that I'm aware of. Therefore, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments?
First, for the garage, I'm favorable for the proposed 30 by 30 garage. A couple of reasons for that is, you know, I appreciate the applicant's testimony and statement that it would be a single story garage. So I don't think it would look like that overbearing on the property. Of course, to Mr. Shaw's point, if it was attached, they'd have by right to do it. And it is, you know, a pretty small house even for that neighborhood. It's a pretty large piece of property. You know, there's some varying property sizes around there. But this particular parcel is big. So I think the garage, you know, meets the criteria and I'm fine with it. I do struggle with the the double driveway, if we want to call it that. You know, you drive around the neighborhood and, yeah, I think I'm seeing some extra wide driveways that were probably, you know, not not permitted. I don't know if they're, I don't think they're complimentary, you know, to the neighborhood. And I would, I'm not favorable unless you folks want to convince me otherwise to the double driveway. I think that a 30 by 30 garage with a new driveway would be a good compliment to the house and fit in with the neighborhood. That's where I'm at on it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm favorable for the garage. I have no issue with that. It's a large piece of property. And again, the applicant explained, you know, their theory behind that. As far as the driveway goes, I have a question for Mr. Falk, if you don't mind. Mr. Falk, can you tell me about driveway? Again, if, what is the, what's the city view on a driveway? So if, I'm not designing this for the applicant. I'm just curious if there was, if the, if the city right away or whatever, four, five, six feet of driveway were cut out in front of the, from the street end, right? And then pavement was left. Is that still okay with city or not? The reason I ask is that I see this kind of thing sometimes in other areas. And I was just curious as to what the view is from the city's point of view on that.
So in other words, you're saying like from the street pavement going in towards towards the lot, it's narrow, then it widens out after you go further back into the driveway? Is that what you mean?
No, no, I'm just asking if, if, I'm just using a number. Let's say eight feet of it or 10 feet was cut out so that it's, there's no driveway exist. The driveway is, is, there's, there's a driveway that still exists, but it's not connected to the street. Let's put it that way. How, what's the view on that?
Okay. Well, there are some people that do have spaces like that, whether it's a cement pad or gravel. Sometimes people use it to park an RV on or car that they don't use that often. But generally, that's not looked upon very favorably because people are going to be driving off the paved public right of way, and it cuts up the edge of the paved road. And when plows go over it and other larger vehicles, it damages the street. And it's more maintenance and cost for the city. So we always want the connection to be fully connected from the paved street to the end of wherever the driveway is.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Falk, there's also the rule that the driveway width is measured up to the set front yard setback from the street. Is that correct or from the lot line?
Correct, Mr. Lionel. All setbacks are measured from the property line. But obviously, in most houses, there's a, a space of anywhere from four or five to seven or eight or 10 feet from the property line to the street pavement. That's all part of the actual right of way. But we measure the driveway actually from the property line. So from the property line going into the lot, whatever the front yard setback is of that property, say it's 20 feet or 10 feet, that can't be wider than 24 feet.
Okay, thank you. The only reason I ask is that, that that sometimes depending what you have for an extra car or recreational vehicle, sometimes parking it on, you know, a pad made out of hot top or cement is better than sometimes parking it on the ground because of the moisture and, you know, the premature rusting and rot. But in this case here, it sounds like the boat's been parked on the side or on the grass for some time. So with that, I'm indifferent to either way. I do notice that the neighbor, again, for footage, the their neighbor at 65 East Hobart has approximately the same, a little bit more than what they're requesting. And there was only one other, to your point, Mr. Courier, there was only one other driveway that I saw on, I think, April or whatever. That was like a circular driveway that exceeded, the two driveways exceeded the, what they were looking for. But again, it's not a prevalent thing in the neighborhood to have two separate driveways. So with that, I'm indifferent. I'll support the motion however it comes out. So with that, I'll support the motion in any fashion to approve the garage.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I think I'm in a fairly similar spot as Mr. Courier. No, no issue with the garage. I think it makes sense. And I think the detached nature is also reasonable and appropriate considering the layout of the house. So that part, I'm in support of. I likewise struggle with the second driveway. And I think I just can't really find support for that. So I think right now I could support the garage for sure, but not the extra driveway.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
Like my colleagues, I support the garage. I'm just not sure on the double driveway. I think I'm more ambivalent than objecting to it. I just, I don't hate it and I don't love it. It's, it goes outside of what the language says. The variance, or I should say, the code state that it, we only have 24 feet, and this would extend that by 20 feet, which is a great or a substantial increase. So again, I support the garage. I'm leaning in non-support of the extra driveway.
Thank you. And I, like my colleagues, am in full support of the garage. And I, I don't support the second driveway. I mean, there's a wider, single driveway, you know. Yeah, we've granted things like that, but two driveways, especially one that's just leading up to the house and is there for access to the side of the house, I can't support that. So I, I wouldn't, wouldn't support that second variance. I suggest that we vote on the variances separately. Would somebody care to make a motion on the variance of the garage? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Daniel Tine and Jody Grant, owners of 15 Dudley Street, Sheet A, Lot 63, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-264, to exceed maximum, maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 71.6% proposed, to construct a detached 30 by 30 single story garage. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants' proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, it's a large piece of property, relatively modest sized house. And we're asking for a detached garage because of the nature of the house. And what was discussed, that the connection to a house into the bedroom area would not be really feasible for the applicant. We find that that the benefits sought by applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue than the variance. We find that is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Courier, how do you vote? You're muted.
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Steve Lionel, I'd also vote in favor. So the variance, number one, for the garage has passed. And now we come to the variance request for the driveway width. And the sense I get from the board is that we would deny this request. So what I propose is that we make a motion to deny the request and see how that goes. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
Let me make a motion. Let me make a motion to deny the area, I might like, I'd like to make a motion to deny the area variance for Daniel Tyne and Jody Grant, owners of fifteen Dudley Street, Sheet A, Lot sixty-three. They were requesting the following, following variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash one ninety-two, Section C to exceed maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, twenty-four feet existing, additional 20 feet, 20 feet wide driveway proposed, driveway proposed for a total of 44 feet in the area zone one. We find that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, there's a new garage being constructed. The applicant is asking for a driveway, a 24-foot wide driveway for that, for that use. And the current use of the driveway, the current driveway, we don't find is necessary as it doesn't lead to, it doesn't, it won't, it won't be of use to a garage, a non-existent garage. And we find that it does not fit into the character of the neighborhood. So we find that the benefits sought by applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue than that variance. So we find that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice will not be served. I'm going to ask whether or not we should also add a special condition that, that when these, the new driveway is fully constructed, paved, that the, that the second driveway be removed. I'm putting that as a special condition. And with that, I make a motion to deny the area variance.
Mr. Shaw.
That doesn't make sense.
I just have a clarification for Mr. Boucher. Prepared a second, but I think, I think as you were noting things, I think the applicant's actually proposed to add a new 20-foot wide driveway. And there was 24 feet existing. So I just wanted to note that. I think we're not, basically not allowing the 44-foot width, but 24 already exists. So they're just proposing 20. They could still come in with a 24-foot if those are not exceeding the 24 overall.
Right. I mean, if, if the, if this variance, the driveway variance gets denied, then they would be required to remove
You're correct.
driveway. And, and we wouldn't need to make a special condition. Adding a special condition when we deny a variance, that's, that sounds really weird.
Yes, you're right. And I think that we're so used to putting them on when we're approving, so I, I, I'll retract that. And with Mr. Shaw's clarification, I'll make that motion again to approve the area variance.
And I'll second.
No, to deny the area variance.
Sorry, to deny the variance, yes.
Mr. Shaw, you're second.
Second, second act corrected, Steve.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to deny the area variance for driveway width. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor of the denial.
And I, Mr. Lionel, I also vote in favor of the denial. So sorry, folks, you're one for two. You get your garage, but when you build the driveway for your new garage, which can be up to 24 feet, it doesn't have to be 20 feet. You will be required to remove the existing driveway. There is a 30-day window of appeal for both variances. And please talk to Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have questions. Okay, move on to case number three. Owner Brittany and Kyle Cavanaro, address eighty-three Dublin Avenue, Sheet fifty-three B, Lot four, requesting the following. Let's see here, we have special, oh yes, okay, special exception from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, Item three, to allow an accessory dwelling unit above the existing attached garage and two of variants from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash thirty-two, Section B one, to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 feet square feet, 750 square feet allowed. One thousand eighty-two square feet proposed. This is in the R nine zone one. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
I, I can. Please give your name and address for the record.
Yep, so my name is Kyle Cavanaro, eighty-three Dublin Ave, Nashville, New Hampshire. My wife Brittany Cavanaro, same residence is with me, and our three-month-old daughter Carly is also with us.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, so we are here tonight to request an accessory dwelling permit, I guess is what we're trying to say, of which one that would exceed the 750-square-foot minimum allowance for an ADU. So we just recently had our first child and my mother so graciously used it as an excuse to retire early and she has become our full-time nanny. So the intent is that my parents would actually move into that space and they would move in with us permanently. One of those things, being an only child, that you kind of know someday you'll, you might, you know, inherit your parents' back. So, you know, that time is kind of coming. With the garage that we had built a couple of years ago, it's, you know, there's the footprints there and we're just trying to utilize a space now to help, you know, I guess, give them that space. So, you know, we couple that with now my wife and I both work remote pretty much full-time. Our companies are going to the hybrid portfolio. So, you know, we're home all the time now. And my mom does come over. It's really difficult to watch a newborn while we're, you know, constantly home and it gets distracting. So I think additional space that that ADU would provide, you know, not only is beneficial to the raising of our child, but also, you know, in taking care of my parents as a guy a little older, so.
Thank you. Are there board members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Carrier.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I remember being involved with the last variance. But is the garage, you know, it obviously in our application, it has like the new walls on the outside. Is that just being refinished or is that being built from scratch? I don't remember it was there before.
So, so that was built two years ago and it's still unfinished today, you know, on the exterior. We are actually having it signed to this year. You know, just due to circumstances, we couldn't get everything done at once. We wanted to. So we chose to pay the driveway last year. I was supposed to sign it, but to your point, we, you know, it was a, you know, I guess a new build, so to speak.
Okay, and then just was wondering, what would, would be the, the impact if you were to maintain that 750 square feet? Had you considered that? Would it be something like like wall off a portion of the second floor or just be the impact if that were, say, not granted?
Sure.
Try to handle that? And what led you to the decision to go with the, I guess, the full second floor footprint, which is what I, how I would describe it?
Yeah, so no, we reviewed what that 770, 750-square-foot number would look like. You know, when you're in that space, it is, you know, it does shrink it down, you know, a decent amount. You know, the intent is that with helping, you know, raise my daughter and then with my father working remote, you know, that little bit of extra space can allow for just a little bit more, you know, space up there. So, you know, my mother can take our daughter and have the space for her up there while my stepfather works remote. You know, I just think that the 750 square foot was a little bit limiting when we tried to, you know, figure out what a layout might look like. You know, trying to tailor it towards that number. So came up with the 1082. That is taking actually, you know, a little bit of space out of the equation already. So we did trim that number down to get to the 1082. And that's the number we felt comfortable with, with both discussing with my parents and obviously my wife.
All right, thank you.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Boucher.
Just a follow-up on Mr. Carrier's questioning. So again, I just, there would be really no other prac, there would be no, what other practical use could the space be used for? Because, you know, obviously the, the space is, you know, on a second story, it's not something that ish, ish, that appears that you could be using for your own purpose. So I'm just curious as to, you know, if there was any possibility for this as practical space, or is this why, again, you're looking at, you know, trying to maybe use more of what the space is above the garage?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess originally it was supposed to be kind of an entertainment space slash man cave for, you know, myself. You know, wife gave me the blessing to build a large garage and do with what I wanted to above it. Circumstances with, you know, having a newborn and then with, you know, COVID kind of changing how things, how people work. Kind of forcing my folks, you know, to maybe have to agree with us. And that's why we're looking to utilize that space above the garage now to find a place for them. I think it's, again, we're trying to utilize, you know, pretty much as much of that footprint as we can within reason. Like I said, the 750 square feet, I, we did try to figure out what a floor plan could look like, you know, knowing what it's going to be used for. And I just, we struggled to make that fit.
Thank you.
Other board members with questions? I have a question. The, this part that's indicated as storage locked, was that, it looks like you subtracted that from the, the overall square footage of the second floor of the garage in order to come up with this 1082. Is that correct?
Correct. So that was our compromise to try to make it a bit smaller was that, you know, my wife and I would utilize that space for our own storage. And because it's my parents living there, you know, we were okay having it be locked and inaccessible to them. So that was kind of our, our attempt to try to help narrow down that window. So we weren't asking for the full square footage of that area.
Okay. And have you been presented with the list of special, nine special conditions that you have to agree to for an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
And do you agree to all of them other than the, the first one, which is the, the part that says does not exceed 750 square feet?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Thank you. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
I see none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Couple of things. Again, we, I remember this hall. It is obviously, as we know, is tucked kind of behind. So again, we don't, you don't really see this too much from the street. I think that the applicant did, I think, a reasonable job at trying to, you know, spit on the space so it's not overbearing as far as the square footage that we're looking at. I think it's reasonable. I, again, you would never know from looking from the street that this, this space exists above the garage. You would not know that. So to me, I'm okay with the square footage, overage on the square footage. So I'm going to support the application for the special exception and the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support. I think I do appreciate, especially the fact that the applicant has endeavored to reduce the full usage of that space above the garage. And I think we have seen a number of times that, you know, where there's kind of a natural space already available to use for an ADU. It's oftentimes this kind of overage sense. I think in this case, again, it would have been even more significant. And I do think it was reasonable that the applicant did carry some of that away. So I am in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
Yes, I too am in support for all of the reasons my colleagues have previously stated and is to be commended that families are readjusting their lives to compensate for their families in spite of the world of COVID. So with that, I am in support.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I'm in support for the reasons previously stated by my colleagues.
And I am also in support for the reasons previously stated. I have a motion for the special exception, please. Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Brittany and Kyle Cavanaro at eighty-three Dublin Ave. Go to the special exception first, a special exception from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, Number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit above the existing attached garage. It is listed in the table of uses as just noted. There is no evidence that this will create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. There should be no overloading of public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. By testimony, the, the special regulations are fulfilled, required for an ADU with the exception of the first one requiring that the area does not exceed 750 square feet, which the board will take up in area variance request. And there is events that will impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, oils, and welfare of residents. So with that, I move approve the special exception with the area.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, second. Thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? No? Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor of the special exception. So that is granted. Now we'll take up the variance. Mr. Shaw, thank you for that.
Again, I'll make a motion this time for an area variance for the owners Brittany and Kyle Cavanaro, eighty-three Dublin Ave. To, the request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash thirty-two, B one, to exceed the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit where 750 square feet is allowed and 1,082 square feet are proposed. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property and the special conditions of property. Part of that is that there is existing unfinished space above a recently constructed garage that the applicant does want to finish off as an ADU. This space is fairly large due to the large footprint of this garage. The applicant has already portioned off a notable area section of the corner of the upstairs to a storage space to remove it from active living space as part of the ADU. And so it's a reasonable usage of the existing space that is available. It would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on the surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. And again, I move to approve this area variance.
Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Discussion on the motion? None. Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor. So congratulations. Your variance has been approved. As you've heard me say earlier, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Please Please contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much.
Okay, going on to case number four. Owner Vivian Adams addresses, uh, L for Land Deerwood Drive. She H lot 150, 103, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 163 for a minimum lot frontage, 105 feet required, zero feet proposed to construct a single-family home on a non-conforming lot of record. Uh, this is the R30 zone word one. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Cronin, prepared to proceed.
Please give your address, please.
Yes, again, John Cronin, uh, the address is 722 Chestnut Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm with the firm of Cronin, Bissin and Zelinski, and it's my pleasure to represent Ms. Adams here this evening in connection with these variances. As the board likely knows, uh, this particular lot has been in existence for some time. In our title research, we went back to 1948, uh, to find the date that it was created. At that particular time, Deerwood Drive was referred to in the deed as the highway leading from Bloods Crossing to Pine Hill Road. Regardless of what the status of that road is, we presume it's a Class 6 highway, but whether it's private, there's clearly prescriptive rights or reserved rights of access to that particular lot. It sits in a split zone, as you can see on the screen share that's there, and the proposal here is to build a single-family home on the residential portion of the lot. That, uh, corner lot is, uh, you scroll down a little bit, you can see that house in the corner. That would be at the corner of Massasoit Road, which is the nearest Class 5 road. Deerwood does align and correspond with Massasoit Road, which is a road that's shown on the official, uh, city map. So, uh, the cursor is following the course in the distance as it goes forward. It's a rather large lot for the area, it's over three acres in size, there's certainly plenty of room there to put a single-family home on it. We have, uh, passed this along by the fire department. They looked at it and responded and laid out a number of conditions that have, would have to be satisfied in order for this to be developed. The access drive needs to meet the minimum width of 20 feet, which is the width of a fire lane. The minimum width needs to be maintained at all times and no parking signs would need to be posted along the access drive. The access road to be used by the fire department has to extend within 50 feet of at least one exterior door for the proposed home. Uh, as the access road exceeds 150 feet in length, it would have to have an approved turnaround, it'd have to have vertical clearance of 13 and a half feet, and it has to be designed and maintained to carry the loads of fire apparatus. We recognize those conditions, and if the board were to see fit to grant these variances, we would certainly expect it to be subject to a condition that we met the requirements of the fire department. Uh, looking at this particular case, I think it's pretty clear without these variants is the, the lot has no alternative meaningful use. It really needs the variance for the access for it to be productive. The zone does allow single-family residents, and that is what is proposed. When you look at the relief that we are seeking, uh, the frontage relief, I think the first step is say, what purpose does frontage serve? A Supreme Court in Metzger versus the town of Brentwood identified that it was to provide for adequate spacing of homes and to prevent overcrowding, and more importantly, to provide access for emergency vehicles. Clearly, this particular property is not surrounded by any other developed homes, so the large lots to the rear of it seem to be predominantly wetlands. So I don't think that anyone could, uh, argue that there will be an overcrowding or a spacing issue out there. And with the conditions to be maintained as suggested by the fire department, we believe that all of those reasons that a frontage requirement exists, uh, will clearly be established. Looking at the public interest and the spirit and intent of the ordinance prongs a really unusual situation here, where typically I'm, uh, looking to put apartments, for example, on a, a zone where apartments aren't around. In this particular case, the exact use which we're proposing is specifically allowed by the ordinance. Uh, so under the Farag case, uh, we satisfy that standard. Looking at the balancing test, the harm to the applicant versus the, the harm to the public if this were granted, certainly the, uh, the harm to the applicant here is, is basically a fatal blow, as that land on which has been being, taxes have been paid on for years will become unproductive and really unusable. This property and its location would really be out of sight and out of mind for the public. Certainly, it should be no impact on anyone. Perhaps someone on Massasoit Road would prefer that it not be developed and it, uh, maintained as open space in perpetuity, but that's really not the standard, uh, for looking at it. In terms of diminution of surrounding property values, single-family homes are allowed. This will service like a large driveway. It won't be an open road, uh, you know, going through. It will carry up to the lot in the manner and form in which the fire department requires with a necessary turnaround. We have Mr. Goodspeed on the line here, he's a experienced broker, and he will, uh, I can make an offer of proof that he knows this lot for many, many years. He's been attempting to market it, he's had many people interested in it to build rather nice homes on it, but they want to make sure that they get the necessary variances. It's his, uh, his opinion that in the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished if the variances are granted. When you look at the, uh, the hardship piece, uh, the lot was created in 1948 on a then-existing highway, which predated, uh, current zoning. With the lot size and proposed, uh, development here, limited to a single-family home, there'll be no issue for overcrowding. And when you look at the hardship prong after Gray Rocks and Simplex, it's really no longer the test of what could you do with it? It's whether or not the applicant's proposal is reasonable. Putting a single-family, uh, house on this particular lot with the appropriate driveway that meets the fire department's conditions is a reasonable use for this particular lot. When you look at the purposes of the frontage requirements in the ordinance and the provision why it's considered a non-conforming lot is clearly the lack of frontage. There's no fear and substantial relationship of those terms as they apply to this particular lot. As one, there will be no overcrowding, there will be no spacing, and there will be no fire risk. Thank you for the opportunity to present this case, be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Um, yeah, um, my first question is, um, I, I didn't find the, a, a copy of the easement. Uh, and I was wondering if you could, uh, briefly walk us through, uh, that, the easement that's mentioned in the application?
As, as far as the rise, there'd be a prescriptive easement over any Class 6 highway for anyone that has frontage and requires it for access. That's a matter of the common law, uh, in terms of access on anyone that has a lot that's on a Class 6 highway.
So there's, uh, there's not a specific easement for this lot, uh, as, as a driveway from Massasoit? I, I
That would be correct.
Okay. Uh, the other question I have is, uh, when I sightwalked it, you kind of make a right-hand turn, so to speak, at the bottom of Massasoit, and you go down a bit, and there's like, uh, like a bunch of, uh, boulders, and I was wondering whereabouts that those boulders are now, like, if, if you, if we were to go to the, uh, you know, the survey, wha, are, are those, where are those boulders? Because I was trying to get my bearings as to where the property is.
Uh, you know, I couldn't tell you that without having the engineer on the line, which he is not. Hopefully, Mr. Basso is with us, uh, so I couldn't make that relationship to not shown on the plan, it would just be a guess on my part.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had is, is the, the Deerwood Drive, if you want to call it that, part of it says it's private. Uh, is, is there a portion of it that's private, and if so, where does that begin and who owns?
Well, that's a good question, because in the title research, it is murky as to the history. The best that we could determine that it was a Class 6 dating back to the 1948 deed, but I think that's open to interpretation as to how it would be. But for the purposes of the variance and access to this particular property, we believe it's irrelevant and immaterial, because whether it's private or a Class 6, uh, Ms. Adams still has the right to pass and repass over it and improve it to the extent necessary, uh, to give her access to that lot for meaningful use of it.
Uh, i-if you could, uh, help me out with the definition of a Class 6 and Class 5 road? I'm, I, you know, I've heard those before, I don't remember what they are.
Chapter 231 of the RSA's detail the, uh, different classifications of highways and streets. And, you know, you start up at your, your federal highways, and you come down to your local roads. Most of your local roads, and I would submit without doing the check, but I would be willing to bet on it, that Massasoit is a Class 5 public highway. That means it's a road that's open, uh, to the public, and the road is repaired and maintained on a regular basis by the community where it exists. A Class 6 road can be a, one that's created as a Class 6 road, which may be a minimal access type road, and that's one in which the town would not have an obligation to repair and maintain. A Class 6 can also come into being, uh, from what we call the lack of maintenance on a Class 5 highway, and there's a number of cases on that, one that I was dealing with in London, Derry. And a Class 5 road, if it's laid out and the returns are filed with the clerk, and it's built within a 20-year period, it becomes a Class 5 road. Yet for whatever reason, the city, town, or wherever the community is where that road is located, elects not to repair and maintain it in a condition suitable travel, uh, for a number of years, maybe five years. It's a period of time, anyway, that road can lapse into a Class 6 highway. If it becomes a Class 6 highway, the town no longer has the duty to repair and maintain it. But any of those that benefit maintain a prescriptive easement for access to get to and from that lot, whether it remains a Class 6 road or lapses further into private ownership.
All right, and you're saying this is, uh, just to clarify, make sure I got it, is this a Class 5, Class 6, or unknown?
That it's a Class 6 road from the research that we have, uh, done, but like a lot of things going back to 1948, when they laid these things out, they're not as clear as we might do them today.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is, when I was sightwalking it, I see on Deerwood Drive that the drainage is running from the southwest to the northeast, which, in, in, in other words, it's running over the proposed driveway. And in the engineering plan, uh, and I, let me just interrupt for a second, on the engineering plan, the one we have is unsigned. Is there a signed engineering plan on record? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Falk.
All right, we do not have a updated signed or stamped engineering plan or, or topography plan.
Okay. Because on the, the, the unsigned plan, anyway, it looks, that, that, that doesn't look, there's a proposal to raise the grade where the proposed driveway is. So, uh, my concern with that is the drainage, which is currently flowing southeast to northwest, would not flow in the same direction, it would be pushed back to the south. And I, I was wondering if, uh, you feel I'm correct on that or incorrect on that observation?
I, I couldn't render an opinion on that, but to the extent it's a concern, uh, we certainly would be happy to satisfy, uh, the requirements for drainage. There's no intent to build an inferior road. And again, as a common law standard, we couldn't improperly divert, uh, the natural flow of drainage either in, in velocity or volume as it currently exists. So, uh, we, we're proposing to build the road right, and I don't want to get caught up in technicalities here on a single-family lot where a drainage study is not typically required as it would in a new subdivision. But to the extent that that's a concern, uh, I would certainly ask Mrs. Adams to authorize Mr. Basso to spend some more money, uh, to make sure that that drainage is acceptable to your highway department or Mr. Falk or whoever he directs to review it and approve it.
Okay. Uh, the next question is, Deerwood Drive is, is used for passive recreation. And with the proposed raised driveway, if we want to call it that, is, is your, uh, expectation that that would prohibit the use as a shared resource, or would it facilitate and the, and, uh, public still use it, but just on that driveway?
Well, that all depends on how the public uses it, and many of these, uh, remote lots, people tend to use it because it's available and it looks nice, and it's a nice place to walk. If they trespass on it, uh, they may not be able to do that. If they have rights of passage and the, uh, the community has taken property rights and acquired them either by a taking or some other deed, certainly they could defer those rights to the public. If it's a private road, uh, they would not have the rights of passage. If, for, for Class 6 road, uh, unless they needed the rights to pass and repass to get to their property, one could argue that they couldn't. Uh, I don't think that's the intent here, I'm not sure of the level of use there. This property's been, uh, on the market and available for a long time, uh, for anyone to acquire it if they wanted it for private recreation purposes, or to the community if they wanted to make it, uh, for public recreation. But to make it clear, there's no intent here to, uh, to take any rights away from anybody that currently has them.
I, I was asking the question because it gets, it gets back to the easement, uh, because I didn't understand whether it's public land, which I thought it was, and therefore, anyone can access it, and if a driveway is put on public land, to me, it would be the burden of the driveway owner to maintain it, yet the public continues to use it. And I was looking for clarity in that, you know, as part of this application.
I, I mean, if, uh, if I thought that it would be a relevant issue, I would have, uh, thought about it a little more, but whether they can use it or not, would not bar the owner from improving it to the extent they need for access for vehicles to get to their property. So if there's a conflict between the driveway and motor vehicles passing to and from the lot and people that may choose to walk on it, the motor vehicles to get access to the owned lot would have priority. And certainly pedestrians and vehicles coexist on many roads throughout the city, and in remote roads as well. And certainly, everybody's charged with the duty of due care to either walk and use their best judgment and skill and care while they're walking, and same as operating a motor vehicle.
You know, I guess the concern, like, with the proposed raising of the grade is, right now, folks can walk or ride, you know, pretty much anywhere on the right of way, you know, maybe 15 feet wide or so. If there was a raised driveway as is on the plan, and then a kind of a slope on either side, to me, that would neck off any you, travel on it except on the driveway. So you, you'd either, uh, if, if it is a public way, which I'm thinking it is, I, I'm thinking it's public, and yet your applicant has the right to use it as a driveway, then the public would still need and be able to, want to get down it, but would be needing to use the driveway because they can't walk on the left or right side of it. And I, and I, I, I'd be concerned that there, there kind of be a conflict, like, hey, we have, you know, this part of this northwest master plan, that this is a walking trail, and yet it's now got to be maintained by, you know, the, the owner of the property.
Well, I don't see how that would be any different for people walking on Massasoit or any of the other Class 5 roads on the highway. Certainly, the applicant would have the right to improve that, uh, road as it is now to get access. If they wanted to put access out there to, to, to build a tent, they could do it, if it was necessary to get to their lot. So perhaps there's some conflict, but there's no intent here to, uh, to bar anyone that has existing rights of use, uh, from doing so in the future.
Okay, and then one last question is the, the, the turnaround. Where is that proposed to be? Would that be on Deerwood Drive, or would that be on the proposed, on your client's lot?
The turnaround would have to be on the client's lot to, to make the access suitable for the, uh, fire trucks, and there's more than sufficient land area to do that. If you look in the northern section of that lot, unlike most of the area out there, this is a very dry parcel, so you have a lot of opportunity to lay that out.
All right, I think that's All right, I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, any other board members with questions for the applicant? I, I guess, you know, I. I went looking for in the, uh, the registry of deeds. To see if I could find the deed for this property, uh, either from the original. Uh, nineteen forties, uh, creation or, or the. My understanding is the applicant bought it in ninety three.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, wasn't able to find deed and normally when we get something like this, uh. Uh, a copy of the deed is attached to the application for, so that we can understand what the deed says. Um, I didn't see that and I wasn't able to locate it on my own. Um, I'm. Just still a bit. Confused about this notion of, of being able to turn a public road into a private driveway. You, you're saying that you believe that the, the owner has the, has the legal right to do that?
I don't think that's what I said, let me just try and clarify it. I said that the owner. Has the right to improve a class six highway to provide access to their lot. And I believe I said that there's no intent to deprive anyone. That has rights to use that road to use it. So for example, if it is a class six public highway, which we believe, uh, the public could also use it. So we're not trying to convert it into a private driveway and so nobody say, nobody else can use it. I'm not sure who would want to use it. Uh, unless it's maybe for recreation or whatever, but. The, the purpose is it would function like a driveway because it's the only house up there.
I see, and, uh, I also understand that there's, there's no utilities, uh. Near there, so the, the applicant would, would need to, uh. Pay for running the utilities, is that, that's obviously correct.
Yeah, that would, that would be correct, I believe, whatever utilities need to be there. Unless somebody's gonna go solar and geothermal or whatever. But I think they would have to make arrangements to get the utilities at their expense.
I see, thank you. Uh, any board members with, uh, additional questions? Uh, Mr. Courier.
Just, uh, if you could, uh, I, I didn't realize, I, I thought this was a, a property that was owned by. The owner since nineteen forty eight, when this property changed hands in nineteen ninety three. What were the access rights, uh, seeking to be?
Likely the same, uh. I said that the lot was created in nineteen forty eight, not that she acquired it in forty eight. Uh, it may have been better at that particular time because of the passage of time. And certainly I didn't go back into ninety three and see what the. Character of the road was at that time, but from. The aerial shots and the look at it, it looks like it's been the condition it is now for some time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other board members with additional questions? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this application? Not seen. Thank you, okay, so, uh. Is there anybody with questions, concerns or opposition? And, uh, oh, Mr. Falk, you have a comment?
Here, there was, I believe, four letters or emails that were sent in by some of the. Abutting or nearby property owners, I see Mr. Duran was one. And I'm sorry, I had to leave the office and come to a different location for the meeting and I left the other. Papers at my office.
Yeah, I, I have, I, I have them all, let's see, we have one from, uh. Mr. Duran, we have one from, uh. Mr. Corsetti. We have one from, uh, Ms. Shu, uh, Rombi Shu, who's, who's present. And we have one from, uh, Mr. Carbone. Let's see. Let's see, Mr. Duran's here, Ms. Rombi Shu is, Shu is here, uh.
I, I didn't see the other two folks, but I know Mr., I know two of them are here, so.
Yeah, okay, so let's have, uh. Ms. Rombi Shu, uh, uh. If she wishes to, to speak, um, as an alternative to her, uh, her email. Um, you have, you can do that, uh. The emails we have are quite long, I don't really want to read them into the record, I don't.
And, and just, just to clarify, we have some other abutters here, Holly Hark, um, with Robert.
Yeah, well, that, that's fine, we were just trying to keep track of who's, who sent letters. But, uh, so we'll, we'll get everybody. Uh, but let's, let's start with, uh, Ms. Rombi Shu.
I, um, and it's nine Massasoit Road. I live at this property in this neighborhood for over twenty, uh, years. I am familiar with the way this road, the Deerwood Road looked in ninety three, it was a gravel road. It did not, never had a perfect pavement or anything like that, it'd always been very rugged. Even before the fence, the two thousand eleven, the post nine eleven fence were installed around the airport. Um, my everything, uh, most of the concerns that I had, I expressed in the email. The major, one of the major things that we, all of us here that you see, we use that road. Uh, we use it recreationally daily throughout the year. Uh, the other aspect is it is a great concern is their wildlife. There's not a lot of wildlife refuges here in Nashville, in our green state. And this road in this neighborhood, that area is a conservation land. We have rare, we have some rare species that are legally protected. And I will let actually there are people who are. Living on the corner. Uh, Bob and Heather, they are, they're, they will speak for themselves. Of what they observe, the beer bears coming, I mean, it is a jewel of a space. So I would rest with that, it is a great concern and I would let someone else to pitch in, one of my neighbors. Who, because faces is very good to see here and thank you for this forum.
Thank you, I mean, we, we have your, your, uh, email also, which will, uh. Be added to the record, uh, on the city's website.
This is Mary, Mary Ann and Jim Orent at seven Massasoit. And to just clarify and maybe follow up on what, um, Anna was just saying. Um, we've been in touch with, uh, DES in Concord with the New Hampshire Land and Community Heritage Investment. Corporation where the, the Forest Society with the Land Resources Management.
Yeah, please, please make sure you, you face the microphone because when you turn away, then, then your voice fades out. And could you spell your last name for me? I didn't catch it.
It's Orent, O-R-E-N-T.
Thank you, proceed.
Seven Massasoit. Yes, we've spoken with all of these agencies. And they were unaware of the sale of the, the proposed, uh, building on this lot of land. It, um, it is in a drinking water protection area. The public interest I do not believe would be served by developing it. Um, there, it is not in the spirit of the land around it, all of that is conservation land and wetland. It's not designated as wetland, however, um, I believe it was this courier who had walked it. I've walked it many times and I can tell you even in this dry weather, my feet get muddy. That drainage that you're talking about essentially is water that filters through the land that they're proposing to build on. And would highly impact the wetlands that they would be right up against. There is much concern about that. Um. Uh, I do believe it could diminish the value of our properties. We have had this, uh, closed little community with conservation land all where that parcel is. And opening that up could have, um. A huge impact on the wildlife and on the value of our property. It would absolutely cause a change in traffic and not just for that public access. You know, as Anna says, we walk those roads, we walk the, walk the trails through the conservation land. It absolutely would impact, uh, traffic in and out of Massasoit Road. So these organizations, DES, um, the Department of Environmental Services, the New Hampshire Land and Community Heritage Investment. Which abuts this land, I believe. The Forest Society and, and the Land Resources Management have said that they're going to look into this now. I only learned about this hearing and about this proposed building a couple of days ago. So they need time to respond to that. Um, you know, I just, I think that's about it. We want to make sure that you know we are, are strongly against any development of that land. That road was designated as a class six. To preserve the land and to stop traffic from coming through there, that land was not supposed to be developed, so. I'm sorry, what was it you said?
Yes, uh, this is James Orent, I've been here since nineteen ninety nine. Uh, our air, our property, as you'll see on the diagram, abuts the airport. And there's been a tremendous amount of construction at the airport. Um, some of which we've supported. The problem is that when we moved in, we were told that the entire area behind our house was wetlands. The airport fence actually comes up to the back of our property. And they said there would never be any construction there and now there've been, uh. Numerous construction projects with moving of runways. They've taken down hundreds and hundreds of trees. We've seen a tremendous impact on the turkey population, we used to have dozens come through the property. We're now having moose and deer driven up onto our property because they can't hide in the woods.
So the more that, the more building that goes on, the more it impacts one of the only green spaces in Nashville, which is what Anna was saying. All of these organizations are concerned about this now, they only found out about it. So I don't believe that this variance should be granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're timed.
Yeah, and we, uh, yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Duran, would you like to summarize your, your comments?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things and there's, there's a few things that actually aren't addressed in my comments that I heard from, uh, council here. Um, the, one of the first, the biggest concerns I have is there, there was not proper notice here. I mean, I am an abutter. Of the property that they're proposing, which is a public property as their driveway. And I didn't actually receive any official notice, so I assume the same goes for, uh, other abutters. Um, and, and that's a real concern to not get noticed and to find about, find out about this, uh, from our neighbor only. I believe only one person got noticed, I don't know, council can maybe speak to why. Uh, certain abutters didn't get notice of this. Um, the other thing that's not addressed in my written submission. Is that I, I, I'm hearing sometimes one house, I'm hearing, uh, some plurals here. So I, I don't know if there's a, there's a plan, uh, to build two houses. Uh, if a driveway, uh, is, is granted, because I've heard some use of the plural. Uh, so I'm, I'm certainly confused about, uh, what the impact would be, uh, one versus two or versus none.
The, the, we've only been told about one house, I, I haven't heard a plural. Uh, the, the applicant has, has stated that they're building a single house there.
Okay, so it must have been misspeaking, people saying plural, I, I, I heard some use of plural, um.
Go ahead.
And so, so anyway, you know, I generally think that the harm to the general public outweighs the granting of variance. Um, to build a driveway on property owned by the city. Okay, um, I've never heard of, uh, you know, a driveway proposal being used to extend a public road. Um, so I, I, I'm just a little confused about, uh, you know, the, the use of a driveway variance to actually build on city property. Um, never heard of that, um, so I think that that should be, uh, thought about. Um, sort of my second point is that, um, you know, there's a real, um, uh. Uh, burden on the city, uh, that's going to be policing and maintenance of, uh, of, of this improvement. I mean, there's, there's no way it can be, um, you know, fenced off in any way. Um, it is public, if it turns into a, a driveway, it would really be a road. Uh, and people would go down there and they would also be able to turn sort of behind the landscape of my neighbor's property. Um, you know, right now, uh, we've cleared some trees and no one can sort of do anything nefarious at the end of the road here without sort of being in the open view. Um, certainly if people can drive around that corner, corner. I'm concerned that, uh, some of the illicit, uh, illicit drug, uh, dealing will, will come back. Uh, that there is a historical, uh, that has happened historically here. So I do think it'd be a real, um, you know, burden, uh, on the police. And I do think that the city would have to maintain that property because it is, it is city property. Um, I, I would say that the, the, um, the application itself is rather inadequate. Uh, we have an unsigned survey, uh, and it lacks the necessary precision to determine really. Whether the proposed driver would encroach on my property or the other abutter. It also fails to locate, uh, you know, the wetness, I, I mean, I believe there are wetlands there. Uh, um, because I've never been down there when it hasn't been wet. And I'm talking about in the, um, in the public. Part of the property, um, and certainly when they went on to, uh, the, the, the applicant's property, they would see. You'd see that you again have to cross a very, very wet spot. Um. Uh, turning to my third main point. Uh, I think it's substantially unjust to grant a variance because the applicant purchased the parcel with notice. That the parcel's only use was really conservation, perhaps harvesting of timber, recreation and its vacant land. There's no proof that this was ever a buildable lot. Uh, they presented no proof that, uh, you know, that, that it was anyone's intent to turn this into a building lot.
Six seconds, sir.
Okay, uh, the other thing that I will, I will point out that there are multiple parties here. Who have, who have not been notified, uh, this is, this space is used as a hunting space. Uh, very respectful hunters. Family, generations of hunters use this property, they park right here, I've never had any problem with them. Uh, they are, uh, very respectful and I don't think you can take that away from them, there's very little public hunting. Uh, in New Hampshire, the last thing that I'll mention is I have seen, uh, New England cotton till rabbits, uh, down there. Um, more than once, um, it is, it is a rabbit habitat and I see no mention of that. Or any wetland studies in the application and for that reason, I would request that you deny the variance.
Thank you, uh, you, you bring up an interesting point and I had, uh, asked Mr. Falk about this earlier. Um, was there, I, I saw a sign on the other side of the airport for, for this, uh, variance. Was there a, a sign properly placed, um, at this location?
I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, oh, yes, Ms. Courier.
I personally delivered the signs to both Massasoit Road and L. Deerwood, the end of Deerwood Drive. Um, and if you would like, I can show you the aerial of the properties that we notified as per the RSA six seventy two colon three.
That would be useful.
Hey, can you bring that up, please? There's very few abutters in this, on this.
The abutters are all that are touching and across any roads, so we have. This one, which is owned by the city.
Uh, I'm not, not.
Oh, I apologize, thank you for letting me know. So we have this one, which is owned by the city, this is the target parcel. We have this one, which is also owned by the city. We have this one, which is also owned by the city. And we have the Corsetis over here and I believe that's it.
That's it.
Let's see.
My concern was that I'm abutting the proposed improvement. You know, if, if they're claiming that this is a driveway. That they have a right to, I would, you know, I'm abutting that.
Yes, and the notices were sent out two weeks before the meeting, I understand that the. Post office has not been as quick as it once was. However, we have done everything I could possibly do to notify the public beyond knocking on doors.
There are only four abutting property owners, of which three are actually the city, it's just the, the one lot on, on Massasoit that isn't a butter. So we only, we only notified the abutting property owners. Um, so I, in. I believe it was a notified and advertised.
Oh, thank you for.
Okay.
Notified the abutters, but it does impact more than just the people that abut them. And so the other people that are impacted by this did not find out about it until just a couple of days ago.
And I understand your concerns, however, we try to do everything to the extent of the ordinance.
I understand, thank you.
This happens a lot, um, okay, uh, Mr. Corsetti, I, I see that you're here, uh, would you like to summarize your, your statement? You sent it, sent us, uh, an email which we have received. But, uh, if, if you want to speak now, you may.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so give your name and address, yes, can hear you.
All right. Well, I have a lot of concerns because there's a lot of unanswered questions. What are the plans for the drainage at the end of Massasoit Road? Currently, the water drains off to Deerwood with a trench to catch the overflow water from the systems that are on, that are on the paved part. And, uh, it runs down and forms a puddle in heavy rain. Now, if you're going to pave the whole thing down there, you're going to increase the water flow. And if you increase the water flow, what happens? That, uh, there's going to be more water. Now, the last fifty feet of the unpaved part of Massasoit going down drops seven feet in fifty feet. You get that drop, you're going to have an increase in water flow because all of the excess water that hits the pavement will form a huge puddle at the end of the road. Now, there's also a natural gas pipe under the unpaved section. That hasn't been addressed. Now, the unpaved natural pipe isn't even mentioned by anybody. So it shows that there has to be some pavement to protect the natural gas line. Where you don't want to have heavy trucks going over it, construction vehicles, maintenance vehicles, sort of on and so on. So you can't level it off the incline because of the pipes being there and in the current drainage. So a whole new drainage system has to be put in. Who's responsible for that? The city? The city have to pay for that? Never mind the pavement. The the improvement, you've touched on only one thing, fire department. Has okayed the fire trucks. What about snowplows? What about mail deliveries? Everything else?
Trash trucks. Trash trucks.
And trash trucks. All of those are provided by the government and city, okay? Now, as an abutter of the, of the property, okay? I feel it was unfair to only notify the abutter, which was me, and the city. The city knew about it. I took it personally responsibility to go out and notify all of the neighbors of this site. This will degrade, in my opinion, the value of our property. It will increase traffic and possibly make it dangerous because if that drop in the street is not leveled off to a gradual incline, there will be car accidents because people go by this house looking at their GPS, which is misleading. Then it shows an access to that, which there isn't any. I can't count the number of cars in a week in trucks that come down and then are dumbfounded because the road ends. So we have a lot of problems and we have a lot of unanswered questions. Who is going to be responsible for all this pavement? Is it going to be just the property owner? This land was for sale for quite a while. And I won't get into the price they were asking, but it was taken off the market a month ago. And it come up with this plan. Now, as an abutter.
One minute, sir.
Okay, as an abutter, I'm not in favor of this at all. Never mind the effects to wildlife, which is dramatic. Because I see it all the time. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Anybody else here wish to speak in with questions, concerns or opposition? No, we do have a letter from, uh, Mr. Carbon, Carboni, uh, which I, I can read into the record because it's, it's relatively short.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
It looks like we have a hand raised by Mr. Brandon Perotti.
Ah.
Hello there.
Okay, uh, Mr. Perotti, yes, go ahead. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Brandon Perotti, fourteen Lockmere Lane, Asher, New Hampshire. Uh, I am a member of the Conservation Commission, but tonight I come to you as a member, as a citizen of the city of Nashua, and I agree with the testimonies of those that have spoken before. Uh, the parcels to the west of this are L chip properties. And as the people who have spoken before said, this is frequently used by hunters. And it does have characteristics of wetlands. I'd be curious, um, because wetlands can change over time, I believe. DES only considers, uh, wetland maps, delineations to be valid for five years. I'd be interested in seeing if over the past several years, if the wetlands have changed to encroach upon the target parcel that we are speaking about tonight. Uh, so with that being said, I'm against this proposal. I feel as though it's uncharacteristic of the neighborhood it's in and will not provide any value to the community here and to the city at large. And to those members of the public who, uh, frequent this area just for nature, hunting or whatever passive recreation purposes that they prefer. Uh, thank you for your time and that's my opinion for tonight.
Mr. Courier, you have a question?
Yeah, a question for Mr. Perotti because years ago when I was on the Conservation Commission, part of what was accomplished was this northwest parcel was set aside or preserved or conserved. I'm kind of a little bit of loss of the definition. But like the blood road portion that, you know, is still kind of present there, is, is this part of? And is blood road and this portion of Deerwood Drive, is this part of the northwest conservation area that's open to the public? Or is this off of that area? I don't know.
Uh, as far as I'm aware, and once again, I'm speaking as a member of the public tonight, not speaking on behalf of the commission. But, um, the city parcels that abut this, which are not the airport, are the L chip properties, which are conservation. Um, and I guess you'd say that the property markers are a, a political boundary and they by no means, uh, have different characteristics for the physical properties of the land. Um, and the person that facilitates L chip, um, in recent years, they've become a lot more stringent with the requirements for be-ven monitoring. Um, so the, the commission has gotten rather advanced um, by making sure that everything's followed to the T, that we get our funding for doing the monitoring. Um, which I believe that includes walking the boundaries. And I believe, uh, they've started using GPS technology. Uh, perhaps some with the help of the National Regional Planning Commission in order to facilitate, um, walking the boundaries since the boundaries themselves have no trail network. Um, and they're, the markings are relatively, um, primitive, just iron bars in some cases as surveys would use, but to lay people, they might be difficult to find. So to answer your question, um, in short, uh, the target parcel, I believe is not but, um, all the parcels abutting it, the, the SIZI owns that are conservation land, not including the airport parcels, uh, necessarily are included in that monitoring for conservation.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Parry, again, it's Mary Ann Oren. I believe when I spoke to, uh, Paula Bellmore from, uh, DES, I think that she stated this was part of that northwest conservation area that is around this property. Is that, that was the question you were asking?
Yeah, I, I did, I, I didn't know if this was part of the northwest conservation, the Deerwood Drive.
I believe it, I believe it is the conservation land around there. I believe she referenced it as the northwest conservation area.
All right, thank you.
Um, is there anybody else present in this meeting who wishes to speak with questions, concerns or opposition? Okay, now I will read the, the letter from Mr. Carbon. Uh, to whom it may concern, this project will directly impact neighborhood access to the conservation land and trail system that essentially starts at the intersection of Massasoit and Deerwood Drive. Deerwood Drive and the adjoining conservation areas are used daily, daily by neighborhood residents for recreation such as snowshoeing, hiking, jogging, strollers and biking. The variance request does not address how access to this cherished neighborhood resource will be preserved. Should this project remove access, it will absolutely, quote, alter the essential character of the area, unquote, and be, quote, contrary to the public interest, unquote. Please specifically include a plan for how recreational area, excuse me, recreational access will remain unencumbered. Uh, signed John Carbon, one Blackfoot Drive, Nashua. Okay, um, Mr. Cronin, you have five minutes to rebut, um, these, uh, comments you have heard. Uh, Mr. Falk, you, did I miss something?
I believe we should ask to see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor.
I, I did that earlier.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we got it all.
My fault. I did.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm not so sure whether to, to laugh or cry, but seeing that I've been doing this for thirty-five years, I'm going to keep a smile on my face and say the testimony here, uh, brings new meaning to the term "not in my backyard." We've heard about cotton tails, hunters, access, recreation and conservation land. But no one talked a word about private property rights. They want to use this property for their own benefit, like they have for many years. And I understand that. If I lived in that very beautiful neighborhood of Massasoit with large expensive homes, I would like to keep that area protected from my benefit. But under our system, personal property rights, they have meaning. You can't just take them. You can't say, I don't like them. I don't want people to use them because it doesn't fit my ideal of what conservation ought to be. There's a couple of ways you can do that. The folks on Massasoit can pass the hat. My office number is six oh three, six two four, four three three three. I would be happy to entertain any calls if they're seriously interested in preserving that or the Conservation Commission wants to make it an L chip land. I'd be happy to have those discussions. Uh, there's been a couple of issues, I think, technical issues that I need to address. One is notice. I believe, uh, Ms. Perrier addressed that and resolved it, as did Mr. Mr. Falk. I will also note for the record that the gentleman that spoke and said that he took it upon himself to notify everybody in the neighborhood has resolved any defects with notice by providing actual notice to those folks. Uh, secondly, with respect to the road, uh, in New Hampshire, we have Eastman roads. So the communities don't owe the fee underlying the roads. They're owned by the abutters to the centerline. So the city doesn't have any ownership of that road regarding, regardless of its classification. So the question about what the city's obligation with respect to repair and maintenance is an ownership. Uh, that's not a valid, uh, comment. It doesn't really matter for the purposes of this variance. As a quasi judicial board, you know, the role of this board, which you know as well or better than I, is take a look at the five criteria and apply them to the property. Uh, this property has been in existence for a long period of time. It's owned residential. Uh, I'll make it clear for the gentleman that was concerned about my use or someone's use of the plural. As the chair said, this is one lot and one lot only. We're proposing to build one home and the sky will not fall down with the development of one house. One house. It's not going to create freeway traffic. It's going to have a lot less traffic than those houses on Massasoit already have. It's going to have a lot less drainage. Uh, but to keep everybody satisfied, we certainly are receptive to a condition with respect to the fire department's interests. And certainly we'd be willing to provide an engineered plan, uh, to your highway department or highway engineer or whoever you wish, to make sure that that road is built, uh, to best management practices and there are no issues with respect to drainage as required by the law. To the extent that, uh, DES or anybody else has an interest in, in the, the land or they may want to buy it and they just found out about it, that has no bearing at all in what we're doing here this evening. They've had years to look at this property. They've had years to try and buy it. They've had years to do things with it and none of them have taken that step. So that shouldn't have any factor in your decision making tonight. I think you've heard a, a lot from a lot of people. Don't think about any of it's relevant to your issues before you. Thank you for putting so much time and effort into this case. I know you have a busy agenda, so I will say thank you and rest.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the way we work this is that one and only one person with, uh, uh, questions, concerns or opposition, uh, has five minutes to, uh, speak if they wish. So, um, Mr. Duran's hand is up. Is, uh, any, is that okay with everybody else who's present? I'm not seeing objection. Okay, Mr. Duran, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, one of the, one of the real problems with this proposal is that they're using a, a, a request for a driveway variance where they say and admit that they have zero frontage. Uh, they're, they're using that variance request to then improve a public road. That's called something else in many different cases. It's called the development. And so they're trying to really not go through the development process by using, by using this variance. Um, and, 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 but, but because they're using the variance and because they're conceding that they don't have any, um, any frontage. You know, I, I think that the, um, you know, the, uh, the body here can, can appropriately deny that variance request. Um, the, uh, you know, there, there's some other things I'd like to address, um, which is the, uh, you know, the, the value, uh, question of how this will decrease the value of the neighborhood. Uh, this is one of the most valuable neighborhoods in Nashua. Um, many people choose this neighborhood specifically because of the access to the open space here. And, uh, they, they choose Nashua over Hollis. They choose Nashua over Amherst. They choose Nashua over Bedford. Um, and we want some of these affluent people to come to our community and I won't name names. But we want them here and they come here because of this, this open space. If this, uh, uh, I'm trying to figure out what to call it, whether a driveway or a illegal extension of a public roadway, uh, is, is allowed. Um, that will inhibit the access, uh, to these public, to these public spaces. And I haven't heard it addressed at all, um, you know, how, how that, uh, will be worked out. And it will reduce property values in this neighborhood. Um, and, you know, for that, for that critical reason, uh, I don't think that there's a reason, uh, for this variance to be allowed. Uh, a, a, and I'll also say, this property owner took this property knowing what it was. There's no proof that this was ever a buildable property. They bought it in nineteen ninety-three. Much in the same state that, that it was today. It will open the floodgates if Nashua decides to, uh, you know, just allow people, uh, driveway variances to extend public roads, um, to non-buildable lots. Um, and I think the property owner knew that when she bought it and she knows it today. So, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, your comments.
Um, I really want to hear the rest of my colleagues, but, um, I, I am I was actually inclined to support this. I understand the concerns expressed by, uh, by the residents locally. But it's, uh, I also think it's incumbent upon this board to allow for and provide a means for access and usage of a property. In this case, this is one of the only options allowed. I do think and actually kind of would like to, maybe I feel like I should have maybe thought about this earlier. It only kind of came to me here just a couple of minutes ago. I might ask the question, Mr. Falk, if, if I. I might ask the question, Mr. Falk, if, if I could, in that it seems to me that one other option, and it was kind of sparked a little bit by Mr. Duran's final comments about quote development, would it be possible for the applicant to develop a little, a small stretch of Deerwood Drive and the connection portion to Massasoit to provide then the city, developed city street to up to the access that they would need for this parcel on Deerwood Drive? So to me, it seems like that would be something that could be pursued, but be much more intensive. And I don't know they would accomplish anything other than having a bigger developed kind of access than just a driveway extension. But I was kind of curious if, if that would have been something that is actually open to this property owner as a means to get to, I guess, avoiding this variance if you does that, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Can you bring up the aerial per, perhaps? Maybe we can take a look at it. It might be helpful. If you can scroll up a little bit, Kate, the, the distance on that would be significantly longer and it would probably blow the whole thing out of water as far as cost, even though we don't look at cost, but the cost of either the applicant putting in a private road, the city really does not have an interest at this time to pave that section of Deerwood.
Could I, I guess I was, I, I actually meant just basically the way the driveway is proposed, essentially to, to develop the small portion of Deerwood there in the vicinity as a full street and the connection that would be required to Massasoit. So essentially what they're proposing with the driveway, but to do it as a full city street, you know, just that, and then that small stretch down and meeting the frontage, that's probably as far as you'd have to go.
Right, they have to go to the frontage, but even still, you know, they have to have paved frontage for at least the front yard, at, at least the, um, frontage of that zoning district. So it still is gonna be a more than five hundred and fifty feet of roadway that they'd have to, have to construct. You know, the applicant is well aware that they're gonna have to construct something from the end of Massasoit's pavement down to the corner and then traverse north to at least the, the front frontage of that lot. All that has to be paved to the fire department standards. And I know someone mentioned other types of vehicles, city plows, mail trucks, ambulances. If the fire department is okay with it, then generally the engineering department and public works is gonna be okay with it as well. The largest vehicles we have are gonna probably be the, the large ladder trucks, which I'm not sure how many tons they are, but they're very significant heavy trucks. Maybe some cement trucks or some other trucks that would have to haul out some of the logs if the trees were removed. I mean, obviously there are a lot of, a lot of tons as well, but basically that whole road from, from where Kate drew it uh, up until that, probably that first little circle there, all that has to be paved to the city standards. If they come from the other way, coming from the north going down, they're looking at much, much, much more significant distance and probably a much more significant cost. And I don't think that was ever discussed. We have had a few meetings with the applicant over the past several years and that portion coming in from that, that side from the north going south was never discussed as an option. They only always wanted to come in from the end of Massasoit. And Attorney Cronin, um, I'm sure you've talked to the applicant as well. Uh, I'm assuming that you can, uh, confirm what I just said about the access, um, but.
There's a, there's a gated, uh, you know, a fed gated fence on the, the, uh, north side of that. You can't, can't get there. It crosses the airport property, it looks like.
Yeah, the, the airport is not gonna allow any, after, when you get to the, like, the end of perimeter road, you're not gonna be able to go any farther. You know, the airport's not gonna allow that.
Yeah.
And, and we've had at least probably three or four meetings with the applicant and with their team over the years. And the only access that anyone has ever discussed is from coming from Massasoit.
Yeah, I, okay, so, but it, I mean theoretically it would be possible to essentially do where was just developed, full street developed from the end of Massasoit down across the, the frontage of this property in question. Oh, and, and so I think, I guess that, I just wanna, I'll kind of jump off there with my thought and that's that it seems like that would be the one way that the variance request could be overcome. Yes, and I definitely appreciate and understand, not only would it be a much more costly and involved development, but I think it, it would actually go even more against, I think, what the local residents and the director butter would want to see happen. I think certainly a driveway is about as limited of a, um, access as would be, you know, the, the limited development that could be done here. So, um, I, I think this is, and I do think that, um, the other point is, you know, pretty much I, I think we have to be careful about when we talk about, you know, this, this is a property that apparently the ownership has been in existence for close to thirty years. Um, and I don't, you know, it still seems like there's a lot of kind of uncertainty about the understanding interpretation of this class six roadway and what it might or might not have been presented as, but, you know, we, um, I think need to also err to the side of giving the property owner the capability to access and develop their property in a manner that's consistent with that property. Otherwise, I think, and this is where we can maybe, some of my fellow board members might help me out with this, but I think we've run into a few things like this in other, you know, different situations, but seems that it's usually presented as it's essentially a form of taking that the property is no longer allowed to be used in the means or manner of which it's presented as. So, um, I, I guess I, I'm, you know, I don't really like this in a way, but I think it's, it's something that is, is, um, actually a, an appropriate, a request and proposal for how to pursue the usage of this property. So I'm, I'm still want to hear kind of my fellow board members' thoughts and, uh, see what discussion.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McKay, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I think I'm probably more befuddled than anything else. Um, the conservation questions, the wetlands questions, the class six road, is there an easement? Isn't there an easement? What were the implications or what was said when the property was actually purchased? Was it purchased? Knowing that it could be developed, were they assured of that? Were they told they didn't know? Um, there's a drainage issue. Right now I have more questions than answers and, um, when I'm in this much doubt and have this much conflict, I don't think I could support this. Not, um, not with all the questions. I, I think that, um, at the very least, I would want an answer to, from the Conservation Commission about the actual, um, what's the word? I want the actual viability of this land. Is it or has it changed? Is it now, um, considered becoming a wetland if it wasn't prior? Um, if it is part of the L-CHIP in that northeast quadrant? Uh, again, I just have too many questions to be comfortable with saying yes without, or no, without getting more answers. I'm sorry if that's, um, not helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Um, first of all, I mean, I appreciate the testimony this evening on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Cronin and the abutters. I, I'd like to say that while I certainly empathize with the abutters, um, about the, uh, potential development of a neighboring lot, I, I don't find that as a persuasive reason to, to not let the lot get developed, if it can be developed. I mean, certainly, uh, you know, it, it's, it's a bit of a stress on wildlife and everything, but that to me is not persuasive and, and a point of law to consider. Uh, and I just wanted to have that on the record that that doesn't make a negative impact to myself. Uh, but the, the part I'm still struggling with is I'm taking Deerwood Drive as a public way. I mean, that's what our application says, what Ms. Poria just had on the screen says Deerwood Drive public. And I see, uh, and I haven't been instructed otherwise, especially by the applicant, that this, I see this as a public way to access the L-CHIP land for passive recreation and it's been like that for years. Uh, when the board has approved zero frontage in the past, my recollection is it's like the end of a dead end street where there's a property owner that has a reasonable sized parcel and could develop that if they had a driveway come off the street. And, and I think in general this board has approved that. Neatly distinctly different thing about this is it's so far off the street that I've never remember being confronted with a request to build a driveway on a public way. Uh, I, I do have to say, if this weren't approved, the applicant has every right to develop the land just like they do now by making a road to it. It's to, really a question of is it a road to access the land or is it a driveway to access the land? The struggle I have is that I see it's, I could potentially approve it as a driveway, but I would need confidence and in writing that there's not gonna be a restriction to the public way. And the challenge I find is I see it as it would be, if this were approved, it would be a private driveway that the applicant, the owner has to maintain, but it maintains a public way. So anybody can use it. And, and I, I don't find that as a harmonious balance. And I've just never seen a private driveway on a public way. So I, I, for that reason, I, I'm struggling to find support for this application and, uh, happy to hear the opinions of the other board members.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I, I, coming from, um, again, I think, uh, from where Mr. Shaw's coming from, um, I, I believe that, uh, first of all, I don't think there's any other way that access to this property can be achieved. I think that this is where it needs to be. The access, to me, this is the way I look at it. Um, I think, I think the applicant was very clear that, that what they're doing is improving access to the property. I, I think that the applicant said it, um, in his own way, but it was clear to me that this is not preventing anybody from accessing, um, the, the conservation properties, um, that are surrounding this property. Um, I believe that again, the way to be able to build a house is again, for safety reasons, that they need to improve that access and they need to do that on their own volition, you know, that's their, to their cost. But to get the house to be built there, to, to be able to improve that property, to be able to build their home, they would have to improve the road to meet the guidelines for safety, uh, for the fire department to get in. So again, I, I guess I'm not, uh, picking apart what this is. I take for fact that, um, from the applicant that, the, it's deemed as a class six road. That's kind of what is being discerned from this in that, um, that access can be improved to, to, for the applicant, the, uh, the person owns a property to get to the property. Yes, it's a, it's quite a much more distant than what we've seen before. Um, but I just simply look at it as, as, as that, as, as again, just, um, again, the location of it. Massasoit not having been, uh, developed all the way down to bottom, um, and, and that's the case there. So I'm comfortable with that. As far as the, the road design and the, the issues with the drainage and all that, that's all valid concerns. I believe that the applicant, um, did offer to have a condition of an approved engineering plan for the road and drainage, and I would certainly, uh, would want that in there to make sure that, that there are no issues with this, with this, um, access road. So again, very simply, I, I believe that it's certainly just an access road to this property. You know, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we've seen this before, right? We, we've seen lots get sold and people who have enjoyed the nature behind them, um, you know, and then all of a sudden, uh, somebody comes in, buys the property and does some land clearing and builds a house, uh, all, all approved and everything and are not, you know, obviously not used to it or they've lived there a long time and, and something's changed. So I can appreciate that. I, I, I hear that. Um, but again, I don't think that, that we can like, you know, deny that private property owner's rights to develop a lot that is existing and, um, can be developed as a single family home.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I, I recognize the, the, the property rights and this board has in the past, uh, granted, uh, access with, with zero frontage, although I have, I also have, of course, I haven't been on the board all that long, only what, three, four years now, um, seeing where a public road, uh, has been essentially taken over by a private landowner and, and turned into their, their private driveway. That's the part that really has me, uh, concerned and I'm, you know, not only Deerwood, but they would have to improve, uh, the end of Massasoit as well. And, and make it all, uh, subject to, um, the fire department regulations. I'm one, you know, we have lots of questions. I'm wondering whether we should consider tabling this to a future meeting. If we could get, uh, maybe a more detailed engineering plan, get some, something from the, the Conservation Commission. And, and, you know, I mean, true, i- if, if the, I, I actually, I'm gonna ask Mr. Falk this. Is it allowed for a private property owner to, um, improve a public street that doesn't front their property because they would be do, needing to do so for, uh, maybe about a hundred, two hundred and fifty, two hundred feet?
Well, that's a great question. And I, in my twenty-three years at the city, I've never seen a distance like this to be improved. We have, we have had about half a dozen requests that are very similar to this. The board just had one a couple of years ago on Meredith Drive where Meredith Drive stopped at two locations and someone wanted a driveway at the end of the pavement, but it was just like a little turn to go into the property for a driveway. There are usually cases like that. They're usually, we've never seen one that's like this. So I, this would be, this would be really, you know, going on to a new territory, I think, for a DPW and the fire marshal as well. So it's, it's really never been done to this, to this extent, actually.
Matt?
To Chairman, a comment?
Uh, yes, please, Mr. Sullivan.
This, this practice is fairly common across New Hampshire communities, the ability to add a private property owner to make upgrades, particularly within a class six road right of way. The process is governed under RSA six seventy-four forty-one. It's a process that's been undertaken in the city of Nashville. In fact, it was undertaken just three months ago for the Penetra Solar Array construction on Old Harris Road. The Board of Alderman controlled that process. construction on Old Harris Road. The Board of Alderman controlled that process. They ultimately have the authority to grant the building permit for a structure that is being built off of a Class 6 road. So I think one factual piece that's missing from this evening's proceedings is that, should the applicant clear this hurdle with the zoning board of adjustment, they will be asked to then apply to the Board of Alderman for a Class 6 road building permit. That's a specific statutory-held authority from the Board of Alderman for development on Class 6 roads. As part of that process, there will be requirements from the Engineering Department, there'll be requirements from the Fire Marshal's office, and additionally, the Planning Board is asked, is inquired or asked to comment on that request in the context of scattered and premature development. So ultimately, the Board of Alderman hold the authority to either grant or not grant a building permit for the development on a Class 6 road, and that will happen subsequent to any action by the board this evening. Further, although the road, the status of the road is somewhat in question, under the assumption that it is, in fact, a Class 6 road, the Board of Public Works, albeit they don't have maintenance responsibility, they still ultimately are the decision-making authority when it comes to any upgrades that are done within that public right-of-way. And as a result, any utility extensions that are done, any upgrades that are done to drainage or the like, will require Board of Public Works approval. So there are several clearances that need to happen after the zoning board considers its action this evening. But I would say, just for the record, that this is a relatively common practice whereby a private property owner is granted the authority through the, in this case, the governing body, to make upgrades to a Class 6 road. And those are actually, you know, sort of incorporated as part of a formal decision by that body. Additionally, I would add that as part of that process, an agreement and release, and also a maintenance document, will be recorded, or will be required to be recorded by the applicant from the Board of Alderman, that dictates what the responsibilities are for maintenance, and what the restrictions are, and how liability is made, how liability is protected moving forward in the event of, you know, fire response or public works response needed. And the city will not be responsible for maintaining it. In the event that the city maintains the road, it loses its Class 6 designation, lets us otherwise designated as an emergency lane, which it has not been. A few other quick comments, and I don't want to go on for too long, but I think these, these are important things to know. This property is not included as an active conservation parcel. It is certainly adjacent to conservation lands, and I don't want to diminish its natural resource value, but it is not part of an active conservation, I want to clarify that for the record, although it was contemplated as part of the Northwest Sanctuary Plan. Additionally, I would just substantiate that a Butter notification was done properly and in accordance with the record. And I would also just note that any concerns about wetlands would be handled at a later step in the process, be it through the Board of Alderman's approval of the building permit, or through the building permit approval process itself. So the decision this evening does not discard the value of wetlands, nor does it exempt any development of the parcel or associated upgrades to the right-of-way from any appropriate wetlands permitted through the National Conservation Commission, and subsequently the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'm happy to answer any further questions about this, but I did want to put those facts in the record for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That's very, very useful. Further comments by the board? Okay, Mr. Courier.
Well, I guess what I also wanted to speak about was, you know, if, if this lot were developed as a single-family home, my feeling is, there would not be, you know, a detriment to the existing neighborhood. I mean, it would be one home, you know, it would really be an estate lot, this large lot with a home on it. Quite frankly, you probably wouldn't even see it's there from the end of Massasoit. So I didn't speak to that with my initial address. I did speak about, you know, not really, not being persuaded by the, you know, displacement, say, of, you know, the rabbits or whatever. But I did also want to get out on record that I didn't think that the development of a single-family home on this lot would, I don't see that as a detriment to the existing neighborhood. The information from Mr. Sullivan provides comfort to me, because the questions that I didn't have answered would be answered before this were permitted. And I'm now believing that I would support this application, because the questions of how does this potential private driveway on a Class 6 road merge and proceed in harmony with the city, I believe that through the Board of Alderman and the Planning Board and the Public Works, those kinks, because I think there would be kinks, would be ironed out one way or the other. So I'm feeling support for the application at this point.
Ms. McKay.
Yes, in, I'm going to concur with my colleague, Mr. Courier. Matt's comments allayed a lot of fears. While I still have a lot of questions, the property owner's rights to do what a property owner can do on their own property was never in dispute for me. It was more having many, many questions around process and legality. And since Mr. Sullivan outlines a huge plan that would address all of that, and numerous hurdles, as it were, for people to overcome, I think that I'm now not as worried or as confused prior to Mr. Sullivan's comments. So thank you, Mr. Sullivan. It was extremely helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Lionel, Mr. Sullivan has his hand up. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may just state for the record, I certainly was not intending to advocate, you know, for or against a proposal before this, you this evening. I just wanted to state that it is part of a larger process, obviously. And so I just want to put that on the record, that I'm not trying to, you know, dissuade the board from taking any action. I think there are some substantial concerns related to this proposal based on the technicality of the development, but just wanted you to have those facts before you, before you consider any action.
Thank you. That's, that's very useful. Any other board members with further comments? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Vivian Adams, owner, L. Deerwood Drive, Sheet H, Lot 103, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum lot frontage 100 feet, 105 feet required, 0 feet proposed, to construct a single-family home, and I'm not conforming law of record, to the R30 Zone, Ward 1. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposals to property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, special conditions are, is that this is an existing parcel that is off a, what we understand right now today as a Class 6 road, and the location of the access is the most feasible location to have access. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant could not be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that it is within a spirit and an intent of deordrance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice would be served. So, again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Discussion of the motion? Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay is going to abstain. I have too many questions.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, I vote against. However, we do have three votes in favor, and therefore, the motion passes. Ms. McKay abstained, and I voted against. The rest voted in favor. So there is a 30-day window of appeal for this variance. As, of course, Mr. Sullivan explained, there are many, many more steps that have to be taken in order to start this project. But if anybody wishes to ask for rehearing, they should file with Mr. Falk and the Planning Department within 30 days. And at this point, I want to take a five-minute break, and we'll see you back at, we'll say, 9:15.
Hi, how are you? It was a good game, I heard. Stella went to the girls' game. She got some information that Emerson played well, and he played a lot, and he almost scored. Well, that's not bad for a sophomore in his first game. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you know. Well, that's yeah. Yeah, well, that's good. Yeah, yeah. And for your first game as a sophomore in Vassity, and see that, that time, that gives you that confidence. Yeah, spill it up. Good. Yeah, well, good, good, excellent. All right, I just wanted to tell you that we heard, and that I'm glad that he's had all this time. I'm still waiting to be heard. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I had, beginning, I forgot, my picture didn't come up on the thing. So I wonder what it was. And then finally, about five minutes later, something dawned on me, I've got to put my laptop on the thing and open it up, because that's where the camera is. Okay. Here, I got it. Yeah, I got my other phone. All right, I'll talk to you. Yeah. Bye. Hello?
Jerry, you really should mute your Zoom call before you talk to other people.
Oh, I, I thought it was off. Okay. Thanks.
Let's see, do we have, let's see. Mary Ellen, and Mary Ellen's back. Okay, JP, are you back yet? I see Jack, yeah, and Rob, okay. And I see Jerry's there. Waiting for JP. JP Boucher.
Just in case, two JPs apparently tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
There he is.
Okay, we're, we're back. Okay, so. Owner, Nashville Landing LLC, applicant Dick Anagost, Anagnost, address 2 East Spitbrook Road, Sheet A, Lots 218, 1019, 1020. We have, we have two cases regarding this property. The first one is requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-115, Subsection A, to work in the critical wetland and wetland buffer of Spitbrook for temporary and permanent impacts to construct a retail building and fueling facility, along with associated parking, utility connections, stormwater management, and landscaping. This is in the GBM use TOD zones, Warren 7. And do we have somebody to present the case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Bruton from BL Companies. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please give your address for the record.
Yep, again, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer from BL Companies with an address of 355 Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay, I'll just share my screen real quick to help aid the discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions, along with the rest of the development team, as we get into, as we get into this. So what you see here is a proposed site plan. I'll just give you some quick orientation for where we sit. Merrimack River is across the bottom of the page, where I just scribbled in yellow. Daniel Webster Highway is across the second yellow line, and north is in this direction, to the right side of the page, East Spitbrook. The road is to the south, approximately in red, but Adventure Way in the second position here, number two. There are two wetlands associated with this, this project. We have received a positive recommendation from the lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee and the Nashville Conservation Commission, just to alert you guys to where we've been before we've come here tonight. So there are two, two wetlands, as I mentioned, one that we're calling Wetland Area 1. This is a historic wetland that is sat at the end of East Spitbrook. There's currently a drainage system within East Spitbrook. There's actually two. There's a 24-inch pipe that that is controlled by the city that comes and discharges to this wetland down here. There is also a 42-inch pipe that is in this road that crosses under the railroad track, which is adjacent to this property here, that crosses into the railroad track and discharges to the Merrimack River. What we're looking to do is to restore this wetland that we're calling Wetland Area 1. Historically, water has discharged to this wetland and then discharged by flowing south to Webster Square. Due to development over the years, that outlet has been cut off from freely flowing in that direction and it caused some localized flooding in this area. Most particularly of concern to the Worther and property, which is roughly where my hand is floating around now. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to overexcavate the silts and debris that has built up in this wetland over the years to restore it to its original volume and then let it re-vegetate to its natural state. In addition to that, they're also proposing to have a high-level overflow connection from the 24-inch pipe into the 42-inch pipe, which will give it a defined outlet that will cross under the railroad into the Merrimack River. That is to minimize the localized flooding during large events, but also not deprive this area of becoming a wetland as it's historically been over the past couple decades. So that is Wetland Area 1. Wetland Area 2 is just north of Adventure Way, which is roughly where my hand is. So Spitbrook comes down from the west and crosses under Daniel Webster Highway. At this point, it does daylight into a wetland area that is roughly where we are labeling this Wetland Area 2 before being re-entering a pipe that goes underneath this property and eventually makes its way to the Merrimack River. As part of this development, there is some proposed master development, obviously. The Costco and the self-storage building being the first two developments that are being closed to be built with further development to the north in the future. As part of the construction of this, we're proposing to raise the site to be out of the floodplain. And as part of that, we are providing some compensatory storage. So the larger green area you see here is compensatory storage that we're proposing to overexcavate in the buffer of the wetlands to create that area. This will eventually kind of be absorbed into the wetlands. And these two smaller areas that you see here are minor areas of grading that are being proposed as part of the roadway construction for these ring roads that will connect the future development towards the first phase of development, which is the ring road that crosses between the Costco and the self-storage building. So that's kind of a quick, high-level overview of the, of the wetlands and where we're impacting them. You know, we do, we are proposing stormwater management improvements to the sites. Historically, and in general, Daniel Webster Highway to the Merrimack River, everything flows in this direction. And this undeveloped site has been, well, at least vacant site, it was previously developed, has been used as a dumping ground for stormwater for all the commercial development along Daniel Webster Highway. We are proposing significant stormwater management systems to mitigate the two-year event and provide water quality improvements along with helping reduce the circle flooding in this southeast corner. That's kind of the quick, high-level overview, I'm happy to go into way more details. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda, so. You know, I'll stop here unless you want me to go further. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I guess I was just surprised in reading the application that it was just going to retain the two-year storm. I would have thought it would be, you know, at least a five or a 10-year storm. So I guess I was just surprised that that, what I think is a low level of contention and what was the decision behind that?
Absolutely, Mr. Courier, great question. Yep, so that came up with the, the other boards as well. That design storm was selected with consultation with New Hampshire DES in regards to the outlet for the site being 142-inch DOT pipe that crosses under the railroad. The goal of stormwater management, obviously, is to maintain drainage patterns and provide water quality improvements. Given that the site is a stone's throw away from the Merrimack River, the goal for stormwater design on a site that is this close to the eventual outfall for the region is to beat the peak. So the goal for the two-year event is to clean the water because that's the biggest storm that captures the grit and trash and things that come off of commercial parking lots, to clean that water and infiltrate it on-site. Anything larger than that, 5, 10, 100, does flow through the same system that we do have to clean it. But the goal is not to detain it, the goal is to get it into the river as quickly as possible so it doesn't coincide with the peak discharges from all the other commercial properties that do flow through this 42-inch pipe under the railroad. So is this a strategic decision in consultation with some state agencies to make sure that this development doesn't cause flooding uphill?
All right. I, thank you.
Okay, any other board members with questions, like I can only see a couple of them, so, all right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, Mr. Bruton, I think this might have literally been nothing more than a misstatement or misspeaking on your part, but I just wanted to clarify when you're talking about my lands, two and three, I think it is, or, you know, those smaller ones to the more northern part of the property. And you were describing, I think, you were saying something about, I think, again, water flow. But as you started to introduce that, you talked about, you were referencing Spitbrook, and I don't know if you really just meant DW Highway, but I was just, I just wanted to make sure because I was a little bit confused because you're referencing Spitbrook Road.
No, Spitbrook, the actual brook. It really, it really is a brook.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about that.
Yes, Rob. So, East Spitbrook, the road goes to Wetland 1 on the south. The Wetland 2 actually is fed by Spitbrook, the actual brook that crosses under Daniel Webster Highway, daylight, and then is recaptured in a pipe that goes to the Merrimack River.
Thank you, I knew I was missing something.
I, I used to work at the deck facility that, that was in front of Spitbrook Road, so we, Spitbrook, and so we knew all about that.
Thank you.
Okay, other, other board members with questions? For the applicant?
Actually, I'm just.
Mr. Courier?
Sorry, I should have, that 42-inch pipe, DOT pipe, where is that flowing from?
So that, that is within East Spitbrook Road. It flows, it goes west uphill towards Daniel Webster Highway. There is no actual inlet on East Spitbrook for that pipe in terms of catch basins, everything. And the catch basins on East Spitbrook flows into the smaller 24-inch pipe, which ends up in the wetlands. The DOT pipe simply cuts through East Spitbrook under the railroad and into, into the Merrimack River.
What's that?
Sorry, say it again, Mr. Courier?
Where, where does that picking up water from?
I'm going to, Brian, I'll have Brian jump in on this.
Hi, everyone, this is Brian Pratt, civil engineer with Fussin' O'Neill.
Your address, sir?
Company address is 50 Commercial Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. Yeah, that's a DOT pipe that, it was built in, I believe, the late 80s when, when exit one off of the return type of six standards. So that takes, that captures all the flow from all the off-ramps and some of the highway proper, just in that area. So it takes, takes about an acre and a half to two acres of actual flow, a lot of it's impervious. It is routed through a, a level spreader at one point up there, so there are some stormwater treatment. They do have a gate valve up there that can shut it off. But it's all DOT flow, like Matt said, it doesn't take any city flow at all, there's no inlets at all. We did meet with the DOT and they're currently reviewing the, our request to connect to it. But the preliminary meetings were favorable for the connection.
Okay, thank you.
Other board members with questions? I had a brief question. Was the, was any sort of permeable pavement considered for this project?
No, Mr. Chairman, not at this time, wasn't being considered. There are great soils on the property and we are using infiltration stormwater features to recharge groundwater, especially for the two-year event. So we are recharging groundwater, but we are not, not pursuing any previous pavement with either development, the self-storage or the Costco at the time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, okay. People with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Solis, please give your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Joseph Solis, I represent Sparkling Image Car Wash at 204 Daniel Webster.
Go ahead, do you have five minutes?
Yep, so just taking a step back, I'm trying to understand the scope of the, the operation. If I'm understanding correctly, it's self-storage and gas only?
And there's also.
The application, oh, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Well, no, you, you go ahead, you're the applicant, you, you present it.
Sure, so self-storage building, Mr. Solis, a Costco warehouse, and then a Costco-run gas service station. Those are the three buildings being proposed at this time.
Okay, so when you say a Costco warehouse, it's like a typical warehouse club?
Correct.
Okay, now, isn't there one like two miles away?
You are correct, JP, do you want to handle that question on two Costcos in town?
Yeah, that's an easy one to answer. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. John Paul, first name Andrews, last name Director of Real Estate Development for Costco Wholesale. Office address is 45940 Horseshoe Drive, Suite 150 Sterling, Virginia. So what this is, this would be a relocation of the store. We would actually be selling the other building, we've outgrown it. Our business has become very successful over the decades and we've really outgrown this, the current facility. So this would be a relocation, there would not be two stores in the area.
Okay, and could I ask another question in terms of the timeline? Maybe jumping ahead a little bit, I know this is just about the wetlands part, but is there like a timeline for the entire project?
You know, I'll defer to the developer on that, but it's my understanding, you know, as soon as we can get things approved, everybody wants to get things moving. I think the timeline for us as developing the Costco itself would be, if everything goes well, next spring. We, we can't construct, we will not construct through the holiday seasons and certainly winter conditions pose a problem. But again, I'll defer to developer for more detail, but I believe they're planning on doing some of the site development, you know, this year, and then we would have a pad ready for ourselves in the spring and the following year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may, Dick Anagnost?
Yes, please, give your, we can only see your, your lower halves are up, but that's, that's better, okay. And give your address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Dick Anagnost, I'm co-developing this with Rob Parsons, who's also on the call. My address is 1662 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire.
Okay.
So I can probably answer that question more directly. And upon expiration of any of the applicable appeal periods, once the planning board is ruled and once we've received all of our state permits, we would start site construction immediately and probably turn over the Costco portion of the site by the end of 2021 or in beginning of 2022 for spring construction of the Costco warehouse and the gas station. The storage building would probably begin sometime around July of this year and probably finish by December. So that would be the initial timeline. Just for purposes of the board, there are a couple of other pads that are going to be on the site and also a proposed train station for a donation back to the city of Nashville.
Thank you. Other people present with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Hi, my name is Eric Worthy, I'm obviously on 3 East Spitbrook Road across from the proposed site, which we're certainly in favor of, of having neighbors. Just to clarify a little bit on the wetland side of things, obviously, there, we talked about the wetlands that are going down the, basically, the east side of our property. So it goes a little further beyond where everybody is designating where the problem is. There's a, there's basically a, a outlet pipe right there and it goes behind Pheasant Lane Mall and everything else until it then reaches another pipe that goes to the Merrimack River. So how is that going to be handled? It's my question. You know, obviously, you have the wetlands right there that, that we have, the, the runoff that comes from the interstate, like you said, from the smaller pipe, which overflows as, as we all know right now and it goes into a little wetland area, but there's a, there's another area beyond that that needs to be handled.
Go ahead, Brian. I can answer that, this is Brian Pratt again from Fussin' O'Neill. So the problem is when Webster Square came in, in, I think, the early 90s, there used to be a ditch, so that ditch that outlets behind Worther used to have a positive flow, as Mr. Worther mentioned, to the, to the south and it used to reach a 18-inch culvert that went under the railroad tracks and into the river. When Webster Square came in, they relocated that ditch and they raised it about four feet. So what happened is that water no longer had anywhere to outlet. So the wetland behind Worther used to be a drainage ditch that used to have some positive flow. When that development came in, they turned it into a, basically, a wetland with no outlet. So what has happened since then is water that would come down from the city drainage system in that 24-inch culvert would outlet into that pond and then it would just fill up, it would flood the parking lots. It would flood the end of Spitbrook Road, it would flood the gravel access drive to the railroad tracks and then it would spill over onto our subject property and into an infiltration basin on our site. But what would happen is there'd be many feet of flooding during really big storm events and my understanding is the flooding would actually almost reach the building, the Worther building, it would flood their parking lot. So unfortunately, there's really not anything we can do further south beyond that large culvert that Mr. Worther mentioned because we would end up having to lower that ditch. But that ditch is at the toe of a two-to-one slope. So there's really no, there's really no capability to do that. So the alternative, which we worked out with the city, was the connection that Matt Bruton mentioned was that we're going to put a high-level overflow pipe out of the drainage system, the city drainage system, and tie it into the DOT drainage system. It's going to be raised appropriately so that, again, the first flush, the two-year storm will all make it into that, that existing wetland behind Worther. Once that fills up, it'll spill through the overflow bypass pipe, it'll all be clean water because the first flush will all be absorbed into that wetland behind Worther. And again, this was discussed with DOT, this was discussed with city engineers. They, they asked us to try to address some flooding issues, so, you know, we went out there during some rainstorms, tried to figure out exactly what was going on. We did, we surveyed everything and figured out that there really wasn't a possibility to lower that whole ditch to continue the flow to the south. So that's why we're connecting the drain pipe to the north. So realistically, it's going to be a huge improvement to what's there today right now. As Matt mentioned, there's been about 20 years of sediment that's just accumulated at the, at the mouth of that culvert and it's just filled up and buried. There's a big sand delta and that water just basically sits right at, you know, just a couple feet below the pavement elevation. So whenever there's a big storm, there's really nowhere for it to go. By adding this pipe, it's going to lower that, that regular water level, the normal water level down, I think, about three feet. So there'll be a lot of capacity for the storm, so it'll increase the functionality, the functions and values of that wetland. Like I said, it's basically, it's basically a wetlands restoration, we're not really doing anything other than restoring it back to its old channel. But unfortunately, we just can't go any further north, I mean, any further south like Mr. Worther mentioned. But this really will be a huge, a huge benefit for the city and for the Worther property because it will significantly decrease flooding potential. That existing wetland, like I said, will be dredging it, restoring its capacity and giving it an outlet where right now it really doesn't have any outlet. So it'll have flooding capacity that's good for, you know. So it'll have flooding capacity that's good for, you know, very large storm events. Small storm events will all be captured. None of the flow during small storm events will bypass to the river. So no dirty water will get to the river. All the first flush will make it into this wetland, and it will continue its functions and values of treating and infiltrating that first flush, and then high-level storms will bypass into the river with the same water. I hope that answered your question. Sorry, it's a little long-winded, but it's a complicated process.
I did, obviously, you know, try not to have dirty water going into the river systems is paramount.
Yeah, we care greatly for that. And like I said, like Matt said, we did coordinate with DES, with DOT. And, you know, DES's requirements are to treat the first flush, which is, you know, about a first inch of rainfall. We're capturing and treating much more than that.
Great, thank you. That's great information all around. Anybody else on the call with questions, concerns, or opposition? Mr. Porter? You know the drill, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I'm Gene Porter, 77 Concord Street in Nashua. I'm the chairman of the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee, and I'm also a member of the Nashua Conservation Commission. Both groups, which I'm associated, have looked at this in some detail. Nowhere is near the detail that is being examined by DES in Concord, which goes into great detail on the calculations of flow into the Merrimack River. This section of the Merrimack River is designated for special attention for both overflows into the river and for pollution of the river from flows under RSA 483. And it's that charter that we try to observe in our reviews. My examination to date indicates that the applicant has, in fact, met the minimum requirements of DES, that is, the two-year overflow requirements for controlling the flow of stormwater into the river. I mention that as minimum, because I have yet to see any reason why the applicant cannot do more than the minimum to reduce pollution of the Merrimack River. For example, there are two changes, improvements, in my view, that the applicant could make. He could increase the elevation of the overflow pipe in Wetland Area 1. Yes, that would increase the size of the retention pond. Every few years, when there is a three- or four-year storm, every three or four years, there will be a somewhat larger retention pond at the foot of Spitbrook Road. So that's one improvement that, in my view, the applicant could make. The other is to increase the size of the retention basin in Wetland Area 2 that keeps excessive pollution out of the Spitbrook going into the river. Those two improvements could be made by the applicant. Not that the current plan seems to violate the minimum requirements, but that it would be advantageous for the city and particularly for the river if the applicant could retain more of the stormwater to infiltrate the land so that it only overflowed into the river every three, five, 10 years, as Commissioner Courier mentioned early on in the questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions? Yeah, go ahead. You can respond to that.
Just quick response to Mr. Porter's comments. The two-year storm is really the storm you want to go after, because that's the storm that does provide that first flush, which is really getting the poor water quality captured and treated. Anything above the two-year storm is not really increasing any sediment or salt or trash to the water. So the two-year storm is the storm we want to address and tackle. And that's what we're doing based on New Hampshire DES recommendations. Increasing the size of Wetland 1 would create the wetland that's larger than it was ever historically. And Wetland 2 is being expanded for compensatory storage, not for water quality improvements. The water quality improvements that we're making are actually onsite with the subsurface infiltration systems and the above-grade basins. So going larger does not improve water quality any further. It would just recharge more groundwater. I just want to make that distinction.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, not seeing anyone. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, you have any comments?
Again, I see Mr. Fox hand up first.
Do you have rebuttal for and against?
Yes, they kind of commingled a little bit.
Yeah, I think we sort of got rebuttal in there, but, okay, but thank you. I should formally ask for-
I mean, people can say they're all set, but I think we should just address it.
Yeah. Is there, does anybody, are we, we have clear responses to the questions that were brought up? I think so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Fox. It's getting late and-
Yeah, we're not even-
Yeah, we're not, we're not even close to done yet. Okay, so close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, back to you.
Well, thank you. I think this is certainly involved. It appears the Conservation Commission has given it its blessing. So it's met, for me, some of the more environmentally stringent requirements. And in listening to the gentlemen speak, I'm hearing that it's giving, it's going to help with flooding and the surrounding areas. It's going to help by helping to eliminate some of the dirty water that goes into the Merrimack River. And they're closing their initial Costco here in Nashua, opening a bigger site. And relocation for those purposes is always a good thing for the city and for the people who live here. And I think they've really dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's. I think they've met the requirements, though the only thing I probably would ask on some of these special exceptions is if they would, you know, accede to all the- yeah, to the requirements. And other than that, I would be in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I'm in support of the application for the wetland encroachments overall. I think as testimony, the water ends up cleaner. The wetland special criteria, I'm just looking, I don't, I mean, I think, not I think, I believe that the application speaks to it. I don't know if we've gone over that as a board here, but I believe all that criteria is met. So I'm good with it as presented, and I also wanted to throw out that, I forget how many years ago, but after Dow left, this was going to be a lifestyle area with all kinds of homes and movie theaters and a train station, and then a recession came along. So hopefully, that won't happen this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application. And like Mr. Courier, I believe with the material we got, that they pretty much speak to the wetland special conditions. So I'm comfortable with it, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I likewise am in support. I think, at least to my understanding, I think there's overall net improvement with the work that will be done. And so I think that's always a good thing.
Thank you, and I'm also in support of the application for all of the reasons stated. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner, Nashua Landing LLC, applicant Dick Anagast, to East Spitbrook Road for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115A. Work in the critical wetland and wetland buffer of Spitbrook for temporary and permanent impacts to construct a retail building and fueling facility along with associated parking, utility connections, stormwater management, and landscaping. And this is in the GB/MU TOD zones. The, this is listed in the table of uses. There is no evidence that this work will create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal system. And in fact, if anything, there will overall be a potential benefit to things like flooding conditions that are currently being experienced, as well as a better discharge of cleaner water into the Merrimack River. It, again, special regulations are fulfilled as required in the wetland special conditions. And it will not impair integrity beyond a character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, and welfare of the residents. And with that, I move to approve this special exception. Mr. Fox, do you have something I need to cover, the ConCon?
Yes, Mr. Shaw, that was it, just to state that the ConCon voted favorably, so.
And I think there were minor stipulations, as indicated in the minutes that were forwarded to us. I don't think we have the official letter, but-
Yeah, we do have that letter now.
Okay.
There are at least three conditions.
Yeah, so the three conditions are specified in the Conservation Commission letter regarding this property will also be required for stipulations. And get to approve this special exception.
Thank you, and thank you for second, Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also in favor. Okay, so the special exception is granted. 30-day window of appeal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now we go on to case number six, which is for the same property. Requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-108E2, to exceed maximum number of wall signs. Three permitted, eight proposed, four on the Costco building itself, four on the gas canopy. Two, from Land Use Code Section 190-108, Section C1, to exceed maximum wall sign area 150 square feet permitted, 1,148.4 square feet proposed. That's 1,065 square feet on the Costco building, 83.4 square feet on the gas canopy. Okay, oh, yeah, that does add up, all right. Three, from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7, to exceed maximum ground sign height for sign number one, 40 feet permitted, 95, excuse me, 90 feet proposed. Four, to exceed maximum ground height, sign height for sign number two, 40 feet permitted, 85 feet proposed. Five, to exceed maximum area for sign number one, 150 square feet permitted, 630 square feet proposed. And six, to exceed maximum area for sign two, 150 square feet permitted, 630 square feet proposed. Seven, from Land Use Code Section 190-107, Section B1, for maximum area of electronic changing message sign for sign number one, 52 square feet permitted, 315 square feet proposed. And eight, to exceed maximum area of electronic changing message sign for sign number two, 52 square feet permitted, 315 square feet proposed. Nine, from Land Use Code Section 190-97, Section B2, three lines of text only permitted for sign number one, full color, flex face with graphics proposed. And 10, the same thing for sign number two. Eleven, from Land Use Code Section 190-103A1, to allow both proposed ground signs number one and two to be off-premises signs. This is in the GB/MU TOD zones, Ward 7. Do we have somebody here to present this case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, along with a Mr. Jeff Tuttle and a Max Tajada from the Sign Gallery, to answer any questions the board may have that I can't answer. This area has many problems that the retailer, mainly Costco, and the retail developer, Nashua Landing, had to incur. The most important difficulty was that they wanted to have visibility. Any retailer wants to have visibility, and the visibility was impaired by the topography of the land that made it difficult, even though the property is in the Daniel Webster Highway south area. The property is about 30-plus feet below Daniel Webster Highway. That does, and it does not include the buildings that have been built adjacent to Daniel Webster Highway. Also, making it even more difficult was the fact that the developer had to, or wanted to provide two signs so that, because of the two entrances, so not everyone would be coming in one entrance. There were two entrances that would be able to take care of the traffic. In the case of the East Spitbrook Road area, the proposed sign is about 475 feet away from the eastward side of the highway. And in the case of Adventure Way, it's about 350 feet from Daniel Webster Highway. So both of these signs had to overcome distance and height to get the visibility that it was necessary. To do that, the sign company, and the companies, the first steps that they took was to put a balloon up in the air to see where a sign could be seen from Daniel Webster Highway. And the balloon that they sent up ended up in the vicinity of 90 feet in the Advantage Way, Adventure Way, excuse me, area, and 85 feet in the East Spitbrook Road area. The balloon, Katie, could you go back to the first sign that you had? Up the, okay, right, okay. The balloon went up in two places. The one that you're seeing now is, that's on the screen, is in the Advantage, Adventure Way area, which has the Best Buy in front of it. And that was the one that was located that had to have 90 feet to get up in that area. I also want to make a point that even though these pole signs are high, part of it hidden by the buildings and by the topography, so you don't see the pole all the way up. And that balloon is seven feet in size. It was these experiments that the sign makers could make the recommendation as to the height and size of the signs. No use putting up the signs if you can't see them, if you don't have the visibility. In addition, there were going to be other tenants in the area, and that was explained to you in the previous case, that there were other pads that were being put on for tenants. in the, in the area, and that was explained to you in the previous case, that there were other pads that were being put on for tenants. The EMC part of the, the, of the sign was so that these tenants' names could be put up on a varying time basis so people could find them as well in this particular area. It, the sign is, the EMC sign is not intended to be moving. It's not intended to be a movie screen. It's to give notice of the tenants that are in the rear, uh, that have, uh, no visibility. In other words, they want the same thing that Costco would want, but they have no, they will be able to use the EMC sign. It will not have to be another sign put up for them. The size of the sign had to be huge enough to be seen from Daniel Webster Highway. So taking account of the size of the balloon, the size of the signs were recommended so that they could be seen from Daniel Webster Highway, which was the whole purpose in doing the balloon test to begin with. The signs were also necessary to show, as I say, the entrances for the two driveways so that the traffic could be generated in those particular areas. There will be no movement in the EMC sign except for the fact of naming the tenants and, and that was to prevent having to use an, another sign or for their use, for their particular use because they're going to want visibility as well. I will go over quickly the, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, necessary, um, variances that are required, even though you have read them, uh, unless you feel that, uh, it's that the reading of the, the ground signs with the required is sufficient.
I, I, I don't think you need to repeat the.
Okay. Uh, the, both pylon signs are going to be off-premise. When we say off-premise, off the Costco premise is not going to be off the Natural Landing area. And that's the reason that they were put there. The land is still going to be owned by Natural Landing, and there'll be a buttering the, um, the Costco building. As to the wall signs, and I'll try to keep this going because I think you've had a chance to see all of the exhibits, uh, that we have reduced the number of signs. As to the gas camp, canopy, we have taken two signs, so, uh, off. So instead of four signs, we only have two on the gas canopy side. And we, so we've cut the square footage in half to 41.7 square feet. On the Costco building, we requested four signs, and we're cutting that down to three signs on, on the Costco building. The request, the, uh, the Costco sign over the door is to remain in the main entrance. Presently, we have up the gas company, uh, signs that are shown on the gas camp, uh, canopy. Katie, can you get to the, uh? Uh, okay, thank you. As to the Costco sign, there will only be one sign on this side of the building. It will be over the main entranceway. On the other side, there will be one on the westly side, and there will be one on the south side. And even though the size of the signs, the wall signs, seem to be larger than the code, uh, the, the signs themselves, when you take in consideration that the, the wall sign, the wa, excuse me, the wall itself is almost 500 feet, 491.6 feet to be exact. And on the, in the smaller side, it's 325 feet. You can, don't see, you see where the natural sign ordinance doesn't cover this large of a wall space in order to get these people, uh, these signs. And these signs are important for the Costco so that people understand this is the building that they are, that they are looking for. And the height of the wall is 30 feet. So we're looking at three stories for the, uh, the size of the wall is, which again, reduces the overall sign concept for the whole area. We are permitted the three wall signs on Costco, but the total wall signs, the city is taking in consideration the two, uh, that are on the gas canopy. If you have any questions, uh, I or Mr. Tuttle will be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
Attorney Preuner, I just, so what I wanted to clarify is, the application and the numbers we have before us are for the 1,065 square feet on the Costco building. Was that with the, under the four sign calculation, or is that revised three sign?
The, it was the four signs. The, oh, let's see, uh, the, previously, it, it had over the 1,005. It's now down to 78, 788.75 square feet. It's down. The square footage is down. This, to 788.75 feet. And the, um, one for the canopies, it's down to, uh, 41.7 square feet, down in half from the 83.
Okay, so you have no problem if we're revising those numbers?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, again, for the record, John Paul Andrews, Costco Wholesale. We have our architect on, on this call as well, and I had actually asked him to just recalculate the numbers, so uh, based on the three signs on the building and the two signs on the canopy. So I, for the record, I would just like to have him quote the new numbers since he actually ran the calculations.
Thank you, okay, and we'll see if they match the number I just came up.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh, everybody. Uh, my name is John Alvarado, uh, with MG2 Corp. We're the whole architects for Costco Wholesale. For the record, our address is A444, um, West, uh, Westport Avenue in McLean, Virginia. Um, so as John Paul mentioned, right now, we have, also we modified the elevations that you saw uh, as per the comments that we'll be working with, with, with Matt Sullivan Department. Um, right now, we're down to three signs, and the total square footage for those signs on the, on the Costco is going to be 180, 171 total. Uh, that includes a small sign that is going to go on top of the, um, tire service center that is kind of a directional signage, so we can uh, direct, um, customers or, uh, or, or members to the tire center department. And the gas station, yeah, we did, we reduced it in half, so the new square footage is 41.7 square feet. Before was double.
Would you repeat the number for the square footage for the building? That seemed awfully low.
Eight hundred and seventy-one.
Eight hundred and seventy-one.
Eight seventy-one.
Yes, and.
What is the total?
The, I mean, for the total will be, hold on, let me do real, my real quick.
Nine eighteen point seven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Nine eighteen point seven.
Eighteen point seven, okay, thank you.
And, um, also, I mean, we have.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, did you come out with the same numbers?
No, it's nine twelve point seven.
Nine, nine twelve point seven, correct.
Okay.
Uh, now, also, I mean, if, if necessary, if you want to see the new locations of the signs, we also have ready those elevations to show. And, I mean, if you would like to see it, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to share it right now.
I, I don't need to see it. I don't know if any other board members are interested. Okay.
Um, Chair, if I could.
Yeah.
Additional question? So also Attorney Preuner, um, I still feel the need to explore with you a little more on the, um, the EMC signs, and I think you know from my previous positions that, especially with the code that we have in the existing code in the city. I'm, even, even with, um, what I believe you've described, I'm fairly loathe to support any non-text signage that only, that doesn't change any less or any more than every five seconds. But I still would just like to give you further opportunity to at least assure us as a board, the commitment and intention of how the proposed graphic EMC sign would be utilized. And just to, again, at least have a little more of that on the record.
Well, why don't we go just to the sign company itself? Jeff, could you introduce yourself and give your address in answer, Mr., um, to ask questions?
And, and I could just, I also would like, if I can, for just, the other thing I'd like to perhaps have comment is from Costco, uh, themselves, because ultimately it's the ownership of the store that's going to be controlling that sign. And that's where we've run into issues with other applicants historically in this city. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you. My name is, uh, Jeff Tuttle. I'm with the Sign Gallery in Manchester, New Hampshire. My address is 266 Clay Street in Manchester. Uh, the message centers are, um, I mean, there, there's a lot you can control, the message centers. Everything is done through the software. You can control brightness. Um, we normally, we do a lot of billboards, a lot of billboards, and the brightness is usually controlled um, by obviously the time it gets dark, the time it gets light. You don't want it, you want it a little brighter during the day, but you want it a lot dimmer at night. Um, and the, the main key is, uh, people don't understand is that the brighter isn't always better in a message center. Maybe an electric sign it is, but with a message center, because, uh, it's, uh, you're looking at a raw LED instead of an LED behind maybe a sheet of Lexan. Is that the, if it's really, really bright, you can't read anything on the sign at all. So we keep, usually we keep the backgrounds very, very dark, either black or dark background, and then the company's logo is put on the background. And then, you know, as far as the, the time, I know Nashua is five seconds. And that can be, I mean, we can do five, we can do eight, we can do 10 seconds. Um, everything is set up in the programming. We tell the program how often the image that's on there is going to stay before it changes to the next. And it's not going to scroll up, it's not going to scroll across, it's just going to be a change. We don't do any scrolling on any of our billboards. Uh, it is too distracting. It makes it harder for people to read. Um, if you go on the billboards and you see a lot of the billboards, like throughout Boston, we had a contract with Clear Channel for years, like 10 years. We controlled and serviced, uh, all their billboards throughout Boston. You'll never see any scrolling on the billboards. You want a nice, clear, crisp image. Uh, you want a dark background, not light background. You want it to be easy to see. And you just, you don't want anything that's too distracting, and you'll never see a billboard that's like that. And not that I'm calling this a billboard, but the way the messages are going to change on a sign is similar to a billboard. No scrolling, no flashing, no movies, um, nothing like that. It's image change only. Basically, it's not even really image change, it's just logo change only for whatever customer is going to be, you know, advertising on it. Um, and the main reason why we're trying to, uh, I think, you know, the, uh, developers of the property, Mr. Parsons and Mr. Ignos, uh, wanted to do a digital. I think the biggest problem is you try and put all the tenants that might be down in there, say there's five or six extra tenants besides Costco, you can't split that bottom sign up into five, six, even five or six spaces and put people's logo on and be able to see it from the road. You, you just won't. Um, you can see how small the Costco looks on the top sign. You take that and split it up into six sections and put people's logos on, it's going to be useless. No one's going to see who's in there. Um, you'd have to drive underneath the sign to be able to see it. And that was, I think, the reason for the message centers is that every person can have their logo on there, and they get a specific time, and they get their 15 minutes of fame for everybody to see that they're in the plaza. That's down below. Um, we've done extensive research on the whole entire area. We did, um, we went to a site called, um, typography.com, and we actually got the, the, um, type of, uh, the, um, typography map for Nashua in that area. And we were at 170 feet at Daniel Webster Highway. And where the sign is that's going at the Spitbrook Road exit, you're at 133 feet. So you're dropping almost 40 feet from Daniel Webster Highway down to, uh, where the sign's going to go. And then if you go down to where Costco is, it's almost 70 feet. It's between 60 and 70 foot drop. So no one sees the buildings that are down at Costco, um, you know, which helps because it's, you can say that, you know, these signs are really, really big. Yeah, they're big. Even the Costco building signs are big, but there's not, there's no distraction from the road because you can't even see the building from the road. You can't see the property from the road. Everything sits down so far, and as, um, Attorney Preuner said, that with the, as far as the pylon signs go, you, you're missing, you're lowering that 40 feet because of the drop-off, and then you have the buildings on top of that, especially Spitbrook Road. The, um, Old Navy Building is almost 30 feet tall. So if you lose 30 feet plus a 40-foot drop, there's 70 feet you lose already um, of your sign height. So we're only going about 15 to 20 feet above the Old Navy sign. I mean, the Old Navy Building. Um, in the other location, there's buildings, there's signs, there's so many, there's so much distraction, you know, to try and get these signs as high as possible. We have a lot of trees over there as well, that it's, um, I mean, it's really, um, kind of situation is, I would have gone bigger, but, um, you know, I think that, you know, in, um, retrospect, everyone, obviously, the bigger you go, the more expensive it is. And, um, you know, you have to kind of, uh, count your losses at one point, at some point, and say, okay, that's about the biggest we're going to be able to get and kind of go with that.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Elaborate?
Go ahead.
Okay, Dick Anagast, once again, the developer. I guess I should have probably given a 10,000-foot overview before we started, but I'll take one minute now and address the question of the sign usage. So first of all, the signs are off-premise to Costco, and under our agreement with Costco, they have the right to the upper 50% of the sign, which then allows the lower 50% of the sign to be spread amongst the other tenants. And to reiterate what Mr. Tuttle just stated was, um, we're going to have probably at least five, if not seven additional tenants that support Costco and other retail in that area. And the purpose of the sign is so that we can put their logos and their name up there, and they can be seen. And whether it be five second, eight second, or 10 second, this sign is not um, designed to be, have any off-premise advertising to put anybody up there other than, um, tenants that are on the site. The sign's use is really wayfinding. Okay, because the buildings aren't being able to be seen, because the sign will be up there and you'll be able to identify the logo, customers will be able to know that they're in that location. With the poles being hidden in the height necessary to do that, in the size of the sign, as Mr. Tuttle stated, he recommended that they go bigger, but all we want to do is to just let the public know that those people are there. So, again, the, the upper half is Costco, the lower half is for the other tenants. But the other thing I'd like to point out is that the sign is not owned or controlled by Costco. It's owned and controlled by the development overall. So as far as responsibility, it's going to be all of the property owners that are, and tenants that are in there that will be in control of the sign, thereby limiting, um, because you're going to be a tenant in the site, you're going to want your logo up there as long as it possibly up, be up there. It's going to limit the amount of exposure that the sign will have. And I hope I answered that question succinctly enough.
Uh, Mr. Shaw, I, I'm sure you, you've identified the one thing that wasn't addressed.
No, maybe not, because I have something that might not be that, so maybe you'll need to jump into. Um, yeah, and I thank you. I kind of started to realize after I'd asked my question that it probably was more Nashville Landings, uh, control overall, but thank you for clarifying that. I guess one thing I was thinking about is, is the lower half of the sign also only going to display one other business at a time? It will not be divided in any fashion? The whole, the single.
That's correct, sir. The, the reason for that is because it wouldn't be big enough or be seen from the distance that we have to project it. If there was more than one name up there, that's why the amount of, um, text will be limited. It'll be more like, um, if it were, um, a restaurant, it would say restaurant. It wouldn't say, it would give their name and their logo, and that would be it. So there wouldn't be any other text on it, no advertising and that kind of stuff, because it would be in such fine print, and you wouldn't be able to read it from the road. And I might add that these signs are actually. And I might add that these signs are actually a very crucial portion of this development because it's critical to the viability to let the public know who's down there. It's can, well, it's critical to the tenants that the public's able to find them. And the reason that there are two is because in consultation with Planning Department in Nashville, they wanted us to create a ring road that essentially connected all of the retailers there together, thereby creating the distance between the two entrances and to split the traffic between the two. So thereby forcing us to essentially put two entryway signs into the project. And that's why you have two before you tonight.
And I guess I do have one other follow-up as well, just a commitment from yourself on behalf of the development that the frequency of the change of that sign would be no more frequent than every five seconds.
I have that commitment. It'd probably be longer because tenant, other tenants will want to remain up there longer to at least get through the change of a light cycle at the intersection. So that they are not, you know, so that they are being seen at least once every time that light changes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one thing that Mr. Shaw mentioned at the very beginning, which I didn't hear addressed, was the city ordinance restricts electronic message center signs to three lines of text and no graphics. We, and and Mr. Shaw alluded to the fact that although, you know, we we grant EMC variances or special exceptions, whatever, that then the the operator then puts up moving graphics and, you know, background graphics or other graphics on on the EMC. So the, that, just that that you've got an EMC, that in itself is is not an issue. And of course, the size is is an issue, but, you know, we talked about that. But I I suppose we we need convincing that a full graphic display is necessary as opposed to a line of text with the name of the of the tenant.
I guess I'm I'm a little bit confused by which you mean by graphic. If the, if a graphic is considered the logo of the tenant and the tenant's name, that's what's going up here.
I guess, I guess the the logo is a graphic. The way the ordinance is written is it's text, three lines of text, up to three lines of text. And so anything that's not text is a graphic.
Okay, I think that that's what we requested, three lines of text. Attorney Puniya, could you clarify that?
There's no specific request. We just requested the EMC in colored.
It says flex face with graphics.
Yeah, so that if we we can condition it by saying that we will only have three lines of text.
Mr. Falk, you have a comment?
Kate, can you bring up the drawing that shows the ground sign? Because it has some language on it that says.
I didn't see any.
It's on the, it's where you just have this one, where you just have the top part of the sign, that's it.
Yeah. Down the bottom right, well, both sides, it says flex face with graphics, double printed. And then the other side, full color electronic message center. Now, we didn't see any language on it that said only three lines of text. When we see it, when we see the sign picture here that says flex face with graphics, you know, to us, that's, you know, like a movie theater or TV screen that can pretty much show anything. I mean, if it said three lines of text only, period, you know, that that would be one thing, they wouldn't need the variance for that. But, you know, when we saw the language on the drawing, we thought that it was going to be just graphics. Well, I think. You can read it as well as I can, I, that's right, that's what I called it as, so.
What 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 is going to be on the sign? Is it just three lines of text?
I I think we were, I think we were trying to go for, you know, people's logos. Logos are easier to recognize by people because there's so many, there's so many companies that have a logo. And a lot of them are just, you can recognize it, people recognize a company by its logo. You know, I mean, that's something we learned in college when I was in design school is that, you know, you you can see, they'll put colors together. And you can tell just by the colors what companies those are. Because that's what our our brain remembers those colors and that remembers logos. And that's why your companies like Dunkin' Donuts over the years, they were Dunkin' Donuts. And then all of a sudden, they just changed to DD because it becomes a branding. And you know DD is Dunkin' Donuts. And it's, it's a, it's a color and it's a logo thing. I think with the lines, lines of text, I think it's going to actually be more confusing for people, especially with three lines of text. And you're going to have trouble understanding or trying to figure out who that customer is. I mean, if we have to do it, I guess we would have to. But I think it would be better to be able to just put a simple, someone's simple, you know, full color logo on the sign just to make it, you know, a little, a little clearer. As far as the drawing goes, the drawing, it's hard to see, but that line that's on the left that says flex face, that actually goes up to the top sign. You can't see the joint because it kind of, the the black line kind of morphs with the message center. That top sign, the Costco sign, is going to be the flex face. A sign that big, you can't do in plastic, you can't, you have to be, it's like a, basically, it's like a giant trampoline. It's a flex face material, it withstands the wind better, it's printed front and back, so you get better clarity. And we can change it out easy enough where a piece of Plexiglas that big, you get a lot of wind, no molding can hold that face in, and that thing is going to come down and, you know, shoot across the road. With the flex face, it's clamped in in hundreds of places around the sign. So that's a totally different situation than the message center. The message center has nothing to do with flex face at all. The message center will just be a 10 millimeter exposed LED message center. But, you know, like I said, I I think we're really trying to go with the logos for every customer. I think especially since it's just going to be a better selling feature for the developers to get people down there. They're going to say, oh, you're only allowed to put a few lines of text up, you know. Getting a tenant into a space, into any kind of a space, so much relies on signage. And I'm not just saying that because I own a sign company. A lot of it has to do with signage, you know, and and cutting a deal with someone and giving them the signage they need. So that customers can find them, otherwise they're going to sign a lease down there and no one's going to know they're there. And they're not going to last very long, you know, and especially if it's a well-known company that has a specific logo that everyone recognizes.
If I could ask a question. I'm Rob Parsons, co-developer with Dick Anagnost. For the record, 11 Gilboa Lane, Nashville, New Hampshire. If you go back to the image of the sign with Costco showing the entire sign, is that Costco wholesale considered two lines of text or is that considered?
No, that's, that's not, we're not even discussing that. That's, it's the, it's the electronic part that's below.
I'm asking for clarification if the Costco wholesale would be, in that, is that considered an image? Or would that be considered two lines of text?
That's not even considered an electronic message center.
I understand, but if it were displayed as.
That's just a static, a static sign. It, that, the the top half of the sign where it says Costco wholesale and the three lines, the blue lines, that doesn't change, that's, that's not.
What what Bob is asking.
Oh, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, I'm saying if that image was on the lower and it was displayed digitally, but it looked exactly like that. Steve, would that be one line, two lines, or would that be considered an image?
Well, it would certainly be at two lines. And then it's got those three bars there that that's, that's part of the logo. I that, I I, you see, the problem I have is, is that we have an awful lot of, of businesses that just flat out violate the the ordinance about. And, you know, one could certainly argue that the ordinance is outdated, but it's not, it's not our responsibility to to rewrite the rules. And and we've been, we as a zoning board have, at least for the last couple of years, been fairly firm about rejecting requests for graphic EMCs.
Well, what what we're attempting to propose, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is essentially what you see there is Costco wholesale, which is what Rob was trying to point out. If that was the logo for a separate tenant, it would be exactly what you see.
Yeah, I I understand that. And, and I don't know, I mean, if I have the ordinance, there, there's a variance or two variants to request before us to allow a with graphics EMC. And and so that's what we're considering, you know, if now, to to me, the words Costco and wholesale are two lines of text and they could be presented just like that. And that would be fine, the the three bars next to it, I don't know about that. But, you know, that's, that's not what we're here to talk about. Now, but, you know, a, certainly there are are a bit, companies with logos that are more than than just text, you know, their their designs. And that's where you start venturing into, into a real trouble area.
Mr. Chair, could you limit it to logos and store name? Because text, you know, text could mean a sentence or a statement, which is, I think, what the intent to avoid, avoid is. Perhaps, you know, you keep it safe and clean by saying logos and store name.
We could do that, yeah, we could do that. And, you know, if if that's acceptable to the to the applicant.
It is, that's what I was going to propose, Mr. Chair.
Perfect, it's perfect.
So I guess your answer, Mr. Chair, is yes, that's what we would propose.
Okay, thank you. Other board members have questions? Mr. Courier?
He's going to take his.
You're muted, Jack.
Sorry, here I am, sorry about that.
But we answered your question.
When I.
Forty-two.
You know, the, uh, uh, question I have is there's a photograph, Kate had it displayed. It's the one where you see the front of the Old Navy store. It's as if it's taken from about where the Shaw's entrance is on Spitbrook Road. And that's it right there in the top left. I mean, I I just have to say, where you see that, you know, the proposed sign there, call me crazy, but to me, that's much higher than it needs to be. And, you know, I've always thought, what a beautiful view of the mountains of Hudson. And that, and this would punctuate it with a Costco sign. I I look at that, if the front of the Old Navy building, I know, call it 30 feet, maybe 35 feet, just, why couldn't that sign be 20 feet lower? And it would still predominantly be above the Old Navy building. So just help me understand that, because I'm I'm struggling with that, that photo.
Jeff, do you want to answer that question?
Maybe he's muted.
Yeah. If it's all right, I could, there's no foliage in this picture. We did this in the winter. So if.
We did.
The tree line goes, it'll impair visibility. That's the purpose behind the balloon test.
I disagree. I mean, you see a few branches there, there's, there's, there's a great view shed of the property coming down East Dunstable. It's, it's like stadium seating, looking down from that area. And I I I don't see the need for that sign to be that high where that balloon ball is there. I mean, also, that picture is taken, I would say, well off the sidewalk. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to say that's about 20 to 30 feet to the right of the roadway. You look where that white car is, I'm going to say that's 30 feet north of where the picture was taken. No vegetation there, some, there's just no vegetation, no trees.
If it were up to. I'm sorry, go ahead, Rob.
No, I was just going to say, if it were up to me, you know, I know Jeff said he'd like to have bigger signs and more of them. I'd like to, being the person that has to write the check for it, I'd like to have no signs and not build them larger and build them smaller. But the market is dictating what they're needing from us. And we're just trying to do it in a fashion that will make the signs and facilitate them to work.
I mean, I just have to say, I'm not, not trying to be coy with this, but I I've never known a sign guy to want to recommend a smaller sign.
I'm with you and I, we've worked with the tenants more so than with the sign guy, no disrespect to Jeff, but to find out what will adequately suffice to meet the purpose and meet the needs. As Dick said, to really wayfind folks to the site to offset our top graphical challenges.
I I guess one other thing, there was a statement that said tenants will be there. I think five or six, up to five or six tenants that support Costco. And I didn't know if that was maybe just random words or is there some sort of special tenants that will support Costco? I don't, didn't know what was meant by that.
I'll answer that, sure. So what I meant by that is there'll be other retailers, okay? And retailers feed off one another through each other's traffic. So if if one goes down here, let's say if there's a furniture store, it goes to a furniture store, stops in the Costco at the same time. That's what I meant, they're, they're supporting uses and similar uses. It's not like we're putting a manufacturing facility next to Costco. So I apologize if I caused any confusion.
Okay, no problem. And then the other tenants, would they be on the north side of the property? I'm trying to understand where they'd be, because on our kind of floor plan, if you want to call it that, like if you drove down east Spitbrook, you'd, you'd make a left turn and then you'd be facing the fueling area. And then as you head north, the Costco building would be on your right. Then you have a lot of parking, where where are the other tenants on?
So as you go down Spitbrook Road, before you reach the service station, there's a pad there of about 15,000 feet, which could be multiple small tenants or one large one. And then as you go north of the Costco building, there's another large pad site there that could hold approximately 50,000 to 60,000 feet, which could be one large or multiple smaller tenants.
So if if there was, say, a tenant at the south end or the Spitbrook Road end, I mean, it would seem to me they, the sign on the north end would support that versus having the traffic come in and loop around. Or is that not the case? And the same with the tenant on the north end, would you be encouraging the traffic to come in on the south end to get to the north end?
I'm, I'm not sure I fully comprehend it, but I think I know where you're going with that. So if it's on the Spitbrook roadside, then the pad site and the storage unit and the little office building that's there would probably be on that sign to direct those people into the Spitbrook Road entrance. And then if they were on the north of the Costco site towards what we're going to designate where the, where the train station might end up, that would be on the Adventure Way portion of the sign. Did I, did I adequately answer that?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of gets into also, and again, you know, just looking at what Kate's got there, I I just have to say that the, it's, it it looks like that's like not a 90-degree angle sign. And almost anybody traveling on the road or certainly coming down Spitbrook, you're, you're seeing both of those. And and I'm just saying, you need two Costco signs next to each other when they're both predominant. It's, I I'm not.
That's, if you're coming down Spitbrook Road, that's just one of the entrances coming down. So as far as the height, yeah, it looks like it's really high when you're coming down Spitbrook. As you get down lower, you have a lot more competition with, if you look at one of those other drawings, you'll see the, the one coming down Spitbrook Road. You want to scroll to that one. Okay, yeah, so right there, you can see the IHOP. Now, that's, that's that sign coming down Spitbrook Road, that's that sign if you're heading south. So you're heading south now, look, you can see that just, just the IHOP sign automatically becomes competition with that sign. And as you're traveling north and south on that road, you got other trees in the way. That's pretty much why we came up. That's pretty much why we came up with that height. The coming down Spitbrook Road, it, yeah, there's probably that it it looks like it could come down a lot more. But as you get down to Daniel Webster Highway, you really you've got so much competition with trees. As a matter of fact, that sign will not be seen at all if you're heading north, absolutely at all. You won't see it till you get to the set of lights with Spitbrook Road is. And if we had to get it high enough to get over those trees in front of Staples, we would have been at about a hundred and thirty feet tall. And it was just, that would have been absolutely insane. So we we kept it at that height. So we're not getting, well, all we're getting is visibility down down Spitbrook Road. And that's why we have the the kind of the sign at a V. Uh, because if we just did a sign straight on, if you're heading south, you're not going to see the signs you pretty much get at the set of lights. And we're trying to get people to see the sign before they get to that set of lights, so they know they have to get in that lane to turn. And then, when you're coming down Spitbrook Road, you're going to see if we ang if you only put a left angle on it. If you're coming out of Spitbrook Road, you wouldn't see the Costco sign at all. You have to see that, you know, that right side. Now, we can change that V, too. Uh, the normal rule of thumb is if you got a sign that's right, that's pretty much right on the main thoroughfare, you've got a double sided sign back to back. The further you go away from the road, the further the back of those signs have to come apart to be able to see them. And that's a typical, that's almost like a billboard rule uh, when you're on a highway and you get signs, and that's kind of how we learned it. Uh, so the further you get away, you know, we don't want to make them flat, obviously. But, you know, that V was, we thought, probably the best V. In by V, I mean, that's actually a term used in the signs, it's B E E. There's usually like either a ten, fifteen, or a twenty foot V. That's a twenty foot. I mean, we could make it if it if you think it looks too flat, and maybe it looks like it's makes it look too big, we could bring the V down to a fifteen. You know, we just kind of figured, okay, that's the, we thought that was the best, um, you know, spread for the V because of that location, because, like Mr. Pruninger said, it's four hundred and seventy-five feet back, which we measured. So that kind of, I was just trying to explain the height, where we came up with the height and why we came up with that V, the double sided.
I appreciate that. I mean, and and, you know, the explanation of the V, I guess, you know, I'm just, like I say, kind of struggling. I mean, just for if Kate could go down just a little bit to that IHOP sign again. A little bit, yeah, that one right there. I mean, I I I I I make the observation that as you drive south, you're you're further away from that, like, that's that's a fairly good picture of, sure, like, when you're right in front of the IHOP sign, the sign's going to be covered, but there's a pretty good view shed even in summertime, in my opinion. As you drive down the street and look to your left, it's you you know, like, what's there is certainly plenty high that's going to be predominant as you go down the street, in my opinion.
There's a lot of signs and trees on that left side. There really are. When you drive down there, it's surprising. I was surprised how much, and that was during the wintertime, and there were no leaves in the trees. But that was just one shot we took, and that's all, I think that was in the parking lot at Starbucks. Um, because we obviously couldn't take a lot of pictures on the road. It's so busy over there. But, um, and that was just to get a, we, that was the only place we could stop and get a picture of the sign, because every place else, we couldn't see the sign. There was either a tree, there was another, or there's another sign in the way. Um, because there's so many pylon signs down that side between, um, you know, between the two entrances, really. There's a lot of pylon signs down there, and it's actually a lot of trees, too. But mostly pylon signs, they just kind of compete with that one. Like I said, that that was the only spot we could actually get a picture of it, so we could actually show Costco. And I could show Dick and Rob what the signs would look like. Anywhere else, we, everything else is going to be covering it, unfortunately.
Yeah, I guess that's my questions for now. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Courier.
Hey, uh, so it looks like Mr. Falk has wants to make a comment.
Well, I was just gonna make a point. It kind of got off track a little bit, but the board has the submitted sign package. And this really shouldn't be like a negotiation type of thing. You really have to vote on and deliberate on what's submitted and not, you know, well, if it's this height or this height or this size or anything, or you gotta vote on what what you have in front of you. Just as a reminder.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Some of the discussions got a little bit off of that, I thought, so I just want to make sure that the board knows that we're not negotiating a size or a height or an area or the size of the EMC and the three lines of text and this and that. You really have to run what was advertised and what's been submitted.
Well, I mean, we can't, I mean, what we do often is we add special conditions to the to the proposal, so we can, we can.
I just don't want to get out of here, that's all.
Right, absolutely. All right. Any other board members with questions? Seeing none. Move to the next phase, which is anybody wants to speak in favor of this op application? Not seeing anybody. Anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Hi, Joe Solis again, if I may.
Yes, please. I'll give you your address again for the record.
Sure, two oh four Daniel Webster, Sparkling Image Car Wash.
Okay.
Okay, so not against the plan, but just a couple of things. One was was a question with respect to the gas station. Um, will there be an express car wash attached to that gas station at all?
I will speak to that. No, there is no plan for a car wash, and the fuel facility is members only, and we only dispense fuel. There's no diesel. There's nothing else to it. The only other structure besides the canopy that covers the dispensers is the controller enclosure that houses the the Vitera root system and the equipment that runs the the fuel operation.
Okay, and then my my second is there's really more of a comment. You know, we we branded our car wash about four years ago. And, you know, we wanted to make the sign in front of the car wash as big as we could. Dealing with the local ordinances, we we were kind of maxed out at, I believe it was eighty-four square feet for the sign, which we understand is is the law. And we wanted something bigger, but we weren't able to get it. So I guess my statement is more of just one of of signage equity, if you will. Like, I'm not sure how the board is going to vote, but you know, we were pretty restricted on what we were able to do. And when I looked at the proposal, the the ask was a lot bigger than what's permitted. So, you know, I'm just hoping in this process, there's some equity in that. And as a business owner, I'd like to learn a little bit more, maybe study the diagrams on where the signs are going to be positioned. Obviously, the the tall signs, it's clear how that's going to be laid out. But on the actual property, I'd like to learn a little bit more on where the actual signs are going, other than the ones on the buildings itself.
I believe you can download the packet with all of that, the diagrams from the the Agenda Center, the city website. And and in terms of of equity, I mean, we do, we get, obviously, if if somebody meets the ordinance, they never come before the board. Because they don't need the variance. Um, we have granted signs that were in excess of of the ordinance, which is what we're here for, to to consider those questions. So, um, I mean, that that's certainly an option that that was available to you. I, um, yeah, anyway.
Do you have a comment?
Yep, that's fine. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Yes, I have a question. This is Jeff Chambers with Sparkling Image, two oh four Daniel Webster Highway. You may have to pull up the the document. Just I have a question about sign number one on where it's actually located. Because I see on it, it says proposed sign, and then there's a black X. So is it? Is it where it says, that's it, is it where it says proposed sign, or is it the black X that's to the right?
It's the.
The black X that's to the right.
The proposed sign. I don't know who put the black X on there. That wasn't us. I'm not sure who put that on there. I think that.
Look, I see where it works.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That's why I had that star on the top that says sign number one. I I had to identify the signs, like a sign number one and sign number two, because otherwise it was just an easy way to describe them. So that's all. I mean, I do that.
Okay, and I I don't know if anybody that designed that knows the difference in elevation between the well, I know y'all did it from the road, looking at the elevation, but I just kind of wonder how much that sign's going to overshadow our business was kind of my concern. Like how? I I know y'all said the height of the sign, but how low is that from Daniel Webster Highway again? I think Jeff T. said it earlier.
Yes, the Daniel Webster Highway is a hundred and seventy feet. The signs are, the base of the signs are about thirty-five feet, thirty-five to forty feet below the hundred and seventy foot. So you're at about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five feet. So you lose, you take about thirty-five feet, thirty-five, forty feet up the height of the sign. And that's pretty much how high it's going to be from Daniel Webster Highway. So you'll be about fifty-five feet on one and about fifty feet on the other, or something like that, roughly. From from Daniel Webster.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, concerns, or opposition? The applicant has five minutes if they wish to rebut any of the questions or or answer any of the questions or concerns that haven't been answered already, or you can just.
I think that the the questions, I think, have been all been answered. I would only say that I talked to, there's a parachuting company on Advantage Way, Adventure Way, and they were, they're clients of mine, and I was talking to them about something else and told them about this. And they said that I could tell the board that they were in favor of the signs. So.
Okay.
That's, but I think all the other questions, if they have been been answered by the 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 members haven't got their questions answered, we have the people here that will answer them right to Costco. And Dick Agonos is here, and his partner is here. We got, we got everybody.
Great. Well, I think we, everybody's questions got answered.
Good.
So.
I am.
Not everybody, okay.
Well, I I I think it would be prudent if somebody, it could be you, Mr. Lionel, or the applicant, to walk through the revised numbers, because I've got my red pen and I'm can, I it's not clear to me as clerk what exactly these, you know, because I think, you know, the four signs were down to three on the building and three were down to two, but the square footage is if if that was clearly articulated, I I didn't catch that, and I I think we should have that in front of us before a vote.
I think Mr. Lionel has those numbers down. Um, but you're right. Let's make sure we have the right numbers, because we want to make sure that what we want to put up, we can put up. I have on the Costco building, Mr. Lionel, eight hundred and seventy-one square feet. Does that make your number?
Yep, with three signs.
There were three signs. And forty-one point seven feet on the gas canopy.
With two signs.
With two signs.
Yep, that's what I have.
I'm sorry to interrupt, and on the building side for Costco, we're going to have three big signs that basically says Costco wholesale, and one is small sign that will say tire center, but that's more like a wayfinding sign.
That's that's an identification sign, doesn't have to apply.
But the eight hundred and seventy-one square feet include that sign. So if you're just talking about just the Costco wholesale sign is eight hundred and forty. So I want to clarify that.
Okay.
I I in going over the sign package with Carter, we, the tire sign was identification area, correct, Carter? Or do you want to include it in the eight hundred? We will go to eight hundred and seventy-one feet, because we want to come back to the board. We don't want to come back. So.
I don't have it with me. Kate, if you can bring up the, I don't know if we'll be able to read it, because it's going to be pretty small. I'm looking at a little laptop screen. I don't know if I can even.
I can. Let me, let me share the the elevations, so you can see the actual signs. And I can, I can zoom in where, say, Star Center, so you can see what we're talking about. So this is the new elevations. So the first sign that we're going to be seeing is on top of our entrance.
Okay, so how many square feet is that one? Let's just go one at a time. So how many, that one is, uh?
That one is going to be, right here, we have the elevation. Basically, total is around eight foot nine by thirty-two foot long. And the square footage of each one is two hundred and eighty.
Two eighty.
Of each one. So you're going to have three signs of two hundred and eighty. And then the one that I'm, we're talking about is this one that is the tire center, and it's aligned with the red band, so. And that one is just thirty-one square feet.
I think we did count that for. So we'll, we'll do it in.
Eight seventy-one.
Okay, so eight seventy-one for four signs.
Correct.
All right, got it. And the other, the only other thing that we considered changing was for variances nine and ten to add a special condition that the signs would display logo plus store name, which is what was requested. Is is that correct?
But also, I think we're missing the two, the, previously, we were asking for four signs on each face of the gas station canopy. We reduced it to two sides on it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we'll say. We're talking about the EMC area, and I think.
But he's he's right that 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 needed to be discussed also, but yes, two signs. Yeah, two signs on the gas canopy, right. We got that.
It's going to be forty-one point seven square feet.
Right, got that. For, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
That's the end of the public hearing. And now we're in the public meeting. Comments? On my list. Uh, Mr. Courier, you're up.
Well, um, I appreciate the clarification on the building signs. Still a lot of square footage, but I feel, you know, those are acceptable. I I I'm struggling with the electronic message center uh, and the logo to name change stipulation that's being talked about. We've just, I've just never seen success with one of those, just aggravation. And I feel like the three lines of text is to assist with, you know, just not advertising or graphics. So I I realize that if you you trim it down to a logo, that's somewhere in between, but the the total lack of everyone, anyone else paying attention to that, I I struggle with allowing allowing that. And so that I have a hang up on, and then the overall height of the signs, I mean, I'd love to see successful businesses in down here. But that sign over the Old Navy, I just think is, just demonstrates to me, it's just not not needed. But that's where I'm at. Uh, so feel free to try to convince me otherwise.
Hey, Mr. Boucher.
I I support the signage on the building and any directional signs. I I think the share size of the building warrants that. And again, that building will be pretty much almost out of sight. So again, getting down there and and having that identification to me is crucial. Pylon signs in themselves, in the height they're looking for. I get what Mr. Courier is saying about coming down Spitbrook Road. I I think I was looking more at that one particular sign or both of them, really, for that north-south traffic. And, um, At that one particular sign or both of them really for that north-south um traffic and um. I I use a CVS down there, right? So that's going to be one of the new main entrances and and um I know that when you come down um. You're down in the, kind of down in the hole there, and so I think it's really important to understand or see, be able to see that sign. So I think, I believe from testimony for what I'm seeing that I I understand the height and I I I, you know, support that height for for the signage. So um, so I'm I'm supportive of that. There's the the electronic messaging um sign, um, I'm going to support that and I'm going to tell you why. And I think uh the applicant alluded a little bit to it. One of the busiest corridors besides Amherst Street, right, is is Daniel Webster Highway, um, a lot going on down there, um, a lot to look at. And I I honestly do believe that um that in this case, having the sign with the logo, so basically the name and the logo. So it's so different than if I was driving down there and and I'm looking and I see, let's say, the ninety-nine restaurant with the horseshoe, right? I'm going to know that that's the ninety-nine restaurant. It doesn't have to say anything else but that. I think um again. I I think we have a commitment that this is going to be done responsibly. I think, again, with a special condition, I support that. And. You know, at one point, I guess, I I look at it like. Like, I certainly know that we've had some violators on Amherst Street. Um, I I, you know, I think at one point or another, we have to just, I guess, in my, in my way, I look at it. Um, especially in this area, I know what the intention is. I know the importance of of what they're doing. And I guess there's a level of trust that I'm going to have um for that. And I'm also going to trust the fact that with a special condition and what we're saying is that um the enforcement, i-if would need to be, is this, is an enforcement, and and um so I would um have to trust in the city's ability um to follow through with that. So. I think, again, it's a lot of safety, a lot of. A lot of safety identification, um, and and I, again, I I I can wholly support um having that logo. So no different if Best Buy was down there and you see the Best Buy, you know, with the yellow tag, it would be the same thing. And um so I get what they're trying to do, and for that, I I support um the. The uh EMC as stated and with the, with the, with the special condition for the logo and the the name. All set.
Mr. Shaw.
I think I find myself in a pretty similar spot as Mr. Courier. I, but I also, and and I I'm still really struggling with the EMC. And and until it was explained how the intended use was, I was ready to ask the question about. With all the other development down there, what's going to. Keep us from having multiple other very tall signs coming back to us for these other businesses? And so that was what was in my head, and then I hear, okay, the intent is to essentially keep that from a need by putting. Those businesses on that lower half of the Costco side. So fundamentally, it's a very good approach, and I really do appreciate the intent. And I'm also trying to think to somewhat to Mr. Boucher's kind of position is. As much as I share some of the frustration with others that we've seen. What amounts to, just quite frankly, a lot of abuse of EMC signs and the code that we have in the city and what's been outright agreed to us in zoning board meetings through through the past, um, I've shared a lot of that frustration. So I, at the same time, you know, I felt like I explored as far as I could, and I heard a very sincere commitment uh from the applicant that they would adhere to these kind of limitations. So I am, I'm also more than ready to take this applicant at their word and not hold them kind of for others' misdeeds or or problems with adhering to the the code and the restrictions. So I'm trying to, you know, make sure I'm essentially adopting a fairness to that. I do still have a struggle, even with all that being said, that um. The, our code has so explicitly forbade um graphics on our EMC signs that it's very hard for me to still get behind an approval for this. And it's not for not wanting to, it starts to become a bitter question of, are we going beyond the intended land use code as defined and approved by the planning board and ultimately the Board of Aldermen? So that's, that's where I'm still having some struggle. I feel like I might be able to support this with the restrictions that we've, that we've talked about uh in that part of things. But I am still very interested in hearing uh from the rest of, the rest of you uh yet and whatever other discussion might follow. I also do have some angst about the height of those two large signs. And I'll kind of reference to, at least, you know, it's a totally separate case, but, you know, I think, think um. Uh elevation views and and all these things can get a little tricky, but I kind of think back to, uh, for example, one that really comes to mind for me is the Homewood Suites sign on um Everett Turnpike. And the way that was presented to us, it looked like it would be very much kind of. Fully positioned in the context of the height of everything else. Once that sign went up, to me, it was like, that thing is way taller than it needed to be to serve the purpose that was intended. So that's kind of the concern I have about the height of these signs. And I think part of the problem is there's multiple views where that sign will be seen from. There is on uh DW Highway, northbound and southbound, and there certainly is on Spitbrook Road, eastbound. Uh, those would be the primary spots, as well as, you know, all the other kind of circulation going on and all the other plazas nearby, uh, whether that might be over, you know, closer like Barnes and Noble or Chaw's or wherever, so. Um, those are my kind of of struggles with this. I didn't speak to, but I have no issue with the the signs on the building. I think uh the, this is the scale of of the Costco building is such that, and with the the further kind of scaling back that the applicant proposed. Totally reasonable to me. I don't think they'll be uh overbearing in any fashion, so that part of things. So, so I re, I have, I have the concerns about the EMCs and the height of the signs again, pretty much like Mr. Courier. Kind of leave it there and see what the rest of you have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. McKay.
Thank you. Um, like everyone else, I listened and I tried to. Work this out where the, the building is fine, the signage on the building, I, like everyone else, have no issue with. The height of the sign, when I think about it and I think about how. It drops off when you go down there. If you're going into IHOP, you'll see that sign. And to me, when it was put in relation to the tall sign that they want to put up in that general vicinity. Sometimes it's hard to see it, but then when you get down, you have, you sink down, you make that um left, and then you find it. So it's difficult. It's back there by Old Navy. I think that the height of the sign is fine. I think that in certain areas, when you're coming down to view it, you're not going to see it until you're on top of it. And when you have to hurry up to jump across lanes to make that left, you want to have an opportunity not to have to cut somebody off. And so the height, for those reasons, doesn't bother me. I don't think that it's too tall. I think that it's as high as it needs to be. I I'm sure it could be higher and bigger, but this is the place where they landed. And when you see it in relation again to the IHOP sign, it doesn't seem that at a character and it clears the Old Navy building, which it needs to. So I'm okay with the height. The electronic sign, I think to myself, how many times are are we not looking at language? When we're driving, when we're going anywhere, we're trying to take it into the brain quickly. And I think this is what people are trying to do because you only have so many seconds to process and transition the information that you're taking in. And so a logo, if I see that asterisk for Walmart, I know Walmart's coming, not because I saw the word Walmart, but because I saw that little asterisk. Um, and that's what we're becoming, a more graphic, um. A more electronic reality is happening for us. And for me to see the graphic lets me know the name. I may lose those words that say Costco, but I will remember the sign. I will lose the words for Walmart, but I'll remember that logo. It is a logo. And so for that reason, um, and I have absolutely no reason to um not believe the word of the developers. Um, don't think they've ever gone back on their word before, and I don't think they're going to do it now. And so that's my humble opinion, and so I support this application.
Thank you. Um. Okay, I I generally am aligned with Mr. Shaw. Um, no problem with the the wall signs or the canopy signs. And the, the the size of the of the pylon size, signs doesn't bother me. The height bothers me a little bit. Um, I I wish they were a little bit shorter. I really struggle with this thing about graphics, um, and. Because it, the ordinance is so clear that it says no more than three lines of text. So. You know, we've struggled with this one before where we've had an application where they wanted graphic and we, eventually we said, no, no graphics. And if the Aldermen want to rewrite the ordinance to allow a logo and and text or graphics, then that's up to the Alderman. But it's not up to the uh. To the zoning board to essentially rewrite the city ordinances. So I'm, you know, I I'm really having trouble with with the graphics bit. And I think that that. That covers uh all of the issues really, and we're off-premise signs, I don't care about that, that's fine. So um. What my suggestion would be is that we vote on these in groups. That the first group be variances one and two, which have to do with the wall signs. And then we vote on variances um. Three through six, which have to do with the uh, well, actually, let me see this right now. Let's five. Three and four, which have to do with the height of the, of the pylon signs. And then five through eight, which is the size of the pylon signs. Nine and ten uh, which is the EMC, and maybe we can group eleven with with one of the, one of the other groups. So what do we have here? Okay, we have, oh, this is the uh. Three, oh, this, this is what the original, yes, what the agenda says. I I have the list here. So since since I've been, I proposing the grouping, I I don't mind making the actual motions. Rob, you want to, you you want to do, say something?
Yeah, I I actually just wanted to see if there was any more discussion. Mr. Boucher had his hand up a moment ago and.
Sure.
All gone, gone once, so there might be some more to process here.
Yeah, okay, that's great. You know, let's, let's do that. So, Mr. Boucher, you have something more to say?
Yes, um, and again, um, just to maybe more clarify my, my, my thought process on the electronic messaging center, and this may or may not help you, Mr. Shaw. Um, I'm obviously very well aware of what the ordinance says. I guess in my mind or or how I'm looking at this is that this is, to me, um. Very different than what we've seen in the past or what's come before us. The, the device that's gonna, gonna project is going to be electronic messaging center. But in this case here, because we, it's specifically like this logo or name. To me, um, the way I look at it is very simply, maybe to put it is like, no different entity was actually standing on that platform and changing in and out, you know, flex, the flex faces of those particular tenants. So again, it's um not graphic that is auxiliary to the business. It's really true, they're, they're signed there, and um so um. I do, we're saying, you know, again, it's, it's the the mode of of delivering it is the electronic messaging center. Um, but again, I think it's different than a lot of the stuff that we've seen or we've seen um go on. And so again, I I I, hopefully I'm making myself clear, but I'm just trying to give you my train of thought. Again, I'm just looking at this as that it it just, it could very possibly just be that it's just that. It could have been just the flex place that's up there. So it's not, to me, an animated thing. It's not anything other than specifically what you would see on the side of the building, so of of a business. Um, and again. We, you know, what, what, what alternatives are there? I mean, we we can, you know, that that could be a whole other discussion, but um again, I I'm again looking at identifying. Um, being able to, you know, you know, people identify where to go. I mean, what's the alternative to identify those businesses if they can't display in that fashion? So um, so that may or may not help you, but again, I'm just trying to give you my train of thought on how I was looking at that.
Hey, thanks. Uh, Mr. Courier, you have your hand up. You need to take yourself off mute.
Dan, can you hear me now?
Dan now, yes.
When Mr. Shaw was mentioning the Homewood Suites, you know, it it brought back, uh, when we're dealing with that application, the idea of that large sign was needed for directions, like people looking for a place to stay late at night. In this day and age with electronic navigation, which I think is extremely prevalent in cars today. And with like a club membership such as Costco, repeat customers, in my opinion, by definition, a club membership. How many folks are reliant on that large sign to say, ah, there it is? I I, I'm, I'm not seeing the need for that large sign because of that nature. Of that business and navigation, and I, the point hasn't come up, but I just wanted to throw that out because that, I think, is a reality of automotive navigation and more so going forward. That's all I wanted to get out in addition.
Attorney Preary, this, you don't have an opportunity to speak at this time, sorry. Uh, okay, any other board members? Mr. Shaw.
Um, I I appreciate Mr. Boucher's comments, and I guess one of the things that kind of, you know, found myself kind of going back to is. You know, I, you know, I've, I've, I've been pretty adamant, and I noted early on tonight in this case about being loathe to deal with EMCs that have graphics. But. If I actually try to judge this on within spirit and intent of the ordinance. And to Mr. Boucher's point. And to Mr. Boucher's point, and to even the own, the points that I kind of mentioned a little bit ago. I think that I might be able to come around to the graphic sign that is truly static graphic. It is logo and business name only. And I think that if we're essentially either by doing that, reducing the amount of signage area that would need to be presented to the public ultimately to even identify the businesses that are essentially, you know, not visible readily or whatever from Daniel Webster Highway. And as again, kind of Mr. Boucher's point, that these, you know, that essentially that static graphic of what would really look like. And I think this had been the applicant's intent, I think, all along. Is that it would look as if it were just that sign that was just physically normally there. And then all of a sudden it would change and it would be a different sign. So in that sense, I feel like I can come around to this in, by justification that, you know, and this is, this is where we get it. We have to interpret, you know, the intent of the ordinance. I, and I was part of, you know, the Board of Aldermen when we approved the, the main part of this code quite a few years ago. And, you know, I think the real focus of that has always been about having what amounts to moving graphics, the kind of imagery that is anything but similar to static text or a static sign. So I guess I feel like, you know, I'm very much on the margin here, but I do believe that I could support the EMC with a very restrictive kind of context like we've talked about.
Thank you. Other board members still have anything to say? Ms. McKay?
I just have one small comment. I have a GPS in my vehicle. I am directionally challenged. I listen to the voice and I can still drive by and miss where I gotta go. But however, if I have a marker, something that I can see, I can find it. And that's just me because I do get lost with my GPS. I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay, great. Any other board members? Fine. Okay. Would it be acceptable for me to make the motions and group the variances? As needed? Okay. So, owner is National Landing LLC, address to East Spitbrook Road. Sheet A, lots to 18, 10, 19, 10, 20. And we're going to group the variances as follows. So the first group is variances one and two, having to do the wall signs. Number of wall signs, three permitted, five. Actually, it's six, six proposed, four on the Costco building, two on the gas canopy, with a total of 871 square. Well, that's, that's in the next variance. Yes. Four on the building, two on the gas canopy. And variance number two is area of wall signs, 150 square feet permitted, 871 square feet proposed with oh, excuse me, 871 square feet on the Costco building, 41.7 square feet on the gas canopy for a total of 912.7 square feet. So those two variances together, we're going to vote on.
Can I jump in?
Please do.
I, just to clarify, I, I, on, I think there's three on the building and two on the gas canopy.
Oh, there was three plus that identification sign with, so that made it four.
The tire center sign got added back as the fourth.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And is this again request just one and two, or did we also come into?
This is just one and two.
Okay, all right.
I know you're the clerk, so you have to get this all down right.
Mr. Lionel?
Yes.
I also just didn't, this is, you know, maybe the footnote for Mr. Carrier. But, you know, I think it's worth noting that those, those numbers include revisions as, as agreed to proposed and agreed to by the applicant from the original application. So we did see a reduced number of signs.
Right.
For footage.
So again, it was 871 square feet on the building and 41.7 on the canopy?
That's correct.
All right.
912.7 total.
Yep.
So I will second the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think you have to read the five points of law in right before you can vote.
I do. Yes, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I know it's getting late.
Okay. The variances needed, the board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board finds that this is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. And Mr. Shaw have seconded the motion. He seconds it again. Thank you. Take the roll call vote. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
McKay votes yes.
Mr. Courier?
Mr. Courier votes affirmative.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, I also vote in favor. So that's variances one and two. Okay, so now we have variances three, four, and well, also let's do three and four. Okay. Ground sign number one, to exceed maximum sign height, 40 foot permitted, 90 foot proposed. Ground sign number two, to exceed maximum sign height, 40 foot permitted, 85 foot proposed. The very, the board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board finds it is will, will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The board finds it will not be contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. So I, to approve this area variance, do I have a second? Ms. McKay, hand up first. Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, I also vote in favor. It's four to one. Variances three and four pass. Next grouping is, we'll do five, six, seven, and eight. These are for the areas of the signs. Ground sign number one, area 150 square foot proposed, 630 square foot, excuse me, 150 square foot permitted, 630 square foot proposed, and the same for ground sign two, area 150 square foot permitted, three, 630 square foot proposed. And ground signs both one and two, maximum area of electronic changing message sign, 52 square foot allowed, 315 square foot proposed. So this is for both ground signs one and two. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board, Mr. Shaw?
Question, Mr. Lionel, I, I think we should, did you say, sorry, items five through seven or five through eight? Because I think it should be five through eight.
It should be five through eight. Did I say five through seven?
Yes, that's what I thought.
It should be five through eight.
I think you described it as what amounts to five.
Yes, I did.
I would agree that it's described as five through eight.
Okay, so we have five through eight. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Oh, well, haven't, haven't quite finished it yet, but you can second it. The board finds it's within spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Now, Mr. Shaw?
I'll second now.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Courier votes not in favor.
And Mr. Lionel votes in favor. It's four to one. So variances five through eight pass. Now we get to variances nine and 10. Both of these are round sign one and ground sign two, three lines of text is permitted by ordinance. Proposed full color electronic message center flex face with graphics. The board is specifying a special condition that the graphics shall be a store logo only plus store name displayed for no less than five seconds each. Does that sound right in terms of, of what we would had discussed? Yeah, okay, it did. Yeah, you have a comment?
Yeah, and I, I, I feel like also just even though, again, it was all by testimony and intent, that there is again, no transition, that's like any sort of graphical type transition. It's just, it's a, it's an immediate on off.
Static.
By Mr. Tuttle. Just wanted, yeah, so it's static and changes.
And, and, and changing instantaneously. Yes, okay.
No raining down and no.
Right. Like a PowerPoint slide.
Yeah.
A seamless transition from A to B type of thing.
So you got that all, Jack?
Yep, I have, I, I'm, I've got it with instant, instantaneous transition.
Okay. Board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did have an extensive discussion about the, the use of this sign to identify other tenants in the in the development that are not visible from the street. And the board believes that this is a reasonable use of an electronic message sign. The board believes it is within spirit and intent of the ordinance and that it reflects what a physical sign would be just presented electronically. The board believes that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
And Mr. Lionel votes in favor. So that's nine and 10. And then we have number 11, which is to allow both pylon signs, number one, well, it says number one and number one, but we'll change it to number one and number two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's just a minor piece of housekeeping, but I think you should just state that the, that the previous passed four to one.
Yes, thank you. The, the vote to approve variances nine and 10 passed four to one with Mr. Courier voting against.
I've got that covered in the notes.
Okay, variance number 11, to allow both pylon signs, number one and number two, to be off premise signs. The variance is needed, the board finds variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board finds with, this is within spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not, not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. This is to approve this variance. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. It's five to nothing. So all of the variances with the modifications and conditions passed. So there is a 30 day window of appeal. As Mr. Prendergast well knows.
Yes, yes, I am.
And, and that concludes that part of the business.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's been a long evening.
It's, we're not done yet.
You mind?
Yeah, you, you are, you are free to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right. Now we have. It's late, yes. We have owner, we have a rehearing request. Owner, you're Ernest and Constance Gagnon Family Trust. Mr. Courier, you have a comment?
Could we take a short recess?
A five minute recess? Absolutely, you can.
All right.
So we'll come back at 11:42.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay. We are back. Remove the cat from the piece of work we're doing here. Okay. We have a rehearing request. Owner Ernest and Constance Gagnon Family Trust. Request of rehearing is McLean Milton Law Firm. Case address is 49 Buck Meadow Road. JLS Holdings LLC by its attorney, Thomas Hildreth McLean Milton Law Firm. Sheets, 49 Buck Meadow Road, sheet C lot 18, requesting use variance. Land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, item 148, to allow a landscaping business and landscaping equipment storage. And see R40 zone, word five. The board previously denied this request. And this is a rehearing request. And so in what we do here is we have four questions that each the board votes on. There is no testimony allowed during this proceeding. So the first thing we ask is, well, let's, let's discuss this first. Any just general discussion among the board members? No, all right, we can discuss when we get to the individual, individual things and they can make our comments. First, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice denying someone the right to be heard. Ms. McKay.
Uh, no, I don't think there was any denying of anyone to be heard or improper notice.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I don't believe there was any improper notice.
Mr. Boucher.
No.
Mr. Shaw.
Uh, no, I do not believe there were any kinds of procedural errors.
I do not also, I also do not believe there was any procedural error. Okay, wasn't an illegal decision. In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and or variance? Mr. Courier.
I'm just realizing here that unless it dropped off, I need to catch up a little. There's not a voting sheet for this rehearing request.
My apologies. I think I forgot that one.
But I can, I can make up for that. And I will do so, but I'm sorry, if you could repeat the question, I, Mr. Lionel.
Okay, so you, you got for the, the first item that all five members voted no.
Correct, I have that, yeah.
Okay. The, by the way, these questions are at the end of the cheat, so-called cheat sheet that were, that we were given.
Yeah, those are the four questions at the end.
Yes. Okay, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and or variance? Okay, now, Mr. Courier.
I don't believe it was an illegal decision. You know, the board didn't have, you know, wasn't united in its response, but I believe all the points were adjudicated by the board.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Well, you know, I, I read to the, I read to the, you know, the motion for rehearing. I mean, certainly the applicant's lawyer makes a case for, for that in some of the in, in, in his rebuttal here. You know, I was one of the ones that voted in favor of this, so I don't know how I really answer this. I mean, in, in, I don't know how to answer this because I guess I was in favor, so I I don't know.
Oh, I mean, you're, you're being asked, you know, do you believe that it was an illegal decision? Have you been convinced that it was an illegal decision? I mean, you might disagree with it, that's fine, but it, it.
No, no, I, yeah, the point, I guess the point I was baking was, is I'm not going by what my opinion was. I guess I'm going by what was presented in front of us. So right now, I, I don't know what, I don't know yet.
Okay. Mr. Shaw.
I know that, again, as Mr. Boucher noted, the request included language indicating that they believe that we essentially did make an illegal decision, but I guess I don't agree with that. I do think we properly follow the points of law. I do know that, again, that was raised as a concern by the, in the rehearing request.
Ms. McKay.
Okay, well, I'm in Mr. Boucher's canoe. This I don't know that it was illegal, but this complaint certainly brought forward or this request for rehearing certainly brought forward information, so I don't know how I feel either. I was the other one that did, that voted on, you know, the opposite way. I believe this should have went through, so.
I don't believe you were present at this meeting.
I wasn't? I thought I was. Oh, okay. Well, then you know what? I abstain.
It was Ms. Boris, I believe.
Yes.
I abstain.
Yep.
Steph and JP voted for it.
You know why? I was thinking of February. I apologize.
It might be from, from the original December meeting.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Is it?
Because I was there for the initial and tabled it. So no, I abstain.
Okay.
Or, no, Jesus.
Yeah, I, I don't think, you don't need to abstain, Ms. McKay. I mean.
I don't. Well, then I'm still betwixt and between because based on what I read and I would have to say, yeah, I did believe maybe it, based on reading this complaint with the information that was presented within the complaint. I, okay, I'm, I'm just going to say that maybe a mistake was made because I don't know for sure. So I'm going to say yes.
I, I read through the voluminous information presented by the lawyers and as is their job, they are attempting to present the, the issue, present things in a way to convince us to change our mind, but I don't agree with, I'm, I'm along with Mr. Shaw. I don't agree with their position here. I don't believe that we made a an illegal decision. I believe we properly addressed all of the points of law. And so I, I would vote no on this one. So we have, let's see, we have three voted no, we had one vote yes, and one voted nothing. Did you abstain, Mr. Boucher?
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll vote that I believe something is something, there's, there's something not right in my, in my opinion, so I'll vote yes, same as Ms. McKay.
Okay, so we have three to two on this one. With Mr. Boucher and Ms. McKay voting yes. Third, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Boucher.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
I don't believe so.
Ms. McKay.
Yes.
Mr. Courier.
Uh, I, I don't believe so. I just wanted to elaborate on that a little. There was, the attorney wants to enter some new information in this rehearing request, but, but it's by the applicant and it was available all along, just not presented, and that doesn't meet the test of where was there anything that wasn't available at the original public hearing? So I'm, I'm a no.
I'm also a no for exactly the same reasons, Mr. Courier. There's really no new information here that wasn't available at the time. We have lots of voluminous duplicate information, but not, it, it's all saying the same stuff that we already heard. In my view. Okay, that, that one also was three to two in favor of no. Fourth question, is there anything which would cause, would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Shaw.
No.
Ms. McKay.
Yes.
Mr. Courier.
Oh.
Mr. Boucher.
Yes.
And I'm also a no. So again, that's three to two. So what I'm seeing here is that we are denying the rehearing request. Mr. Falk, do you have a, a comment? Have, have I properly handled this?
I I just don't want this to come back on anything procedurally, so maybe take a final vote and say, okay, on the motion for procedural error, the four, the board has voted five to nothing, maybe just summarize the whole thing in, in one motion that kind of says each of the four points of law, how they voted. I know we did them individually, but maybe to wrap it up into one package at the end, so the
Sure.
If this does go to court.
Okay, so here's, here is the way that the board voted on the four points. On the first point, procedural error, all five members voted that there was no procedural error. On the second question, was it an illegal decision? Two members voted yes, three members voted no. On the third question, does the request contain any new information? Two members voted yes, three members voted no. On the fourth question, is there anything which would cause the board to make a different decision? Again, two members voted yes, three members voted no. So the majority denies the rehearing request, saying that there was no error, not an illegal decision, did not present new information and would not cause the board to make a different decision.
Mr. Lionel, is that your motion?
I think we should do it as a motion.
You think this will do as an emotion? Okay.
Let's just do it.
Motion.
Might be overkill, but.
Yeah, all right. So I make a motion to, to take that, those positions with that information about how each point was voted. Do I have a second?
Well, and then can, just to elaborate, because I think, and which then leads to ultimately that the board denies this rehearing request.
Okay, so the, the motion is to deny the rehearing request based on the board's votes on the four questions as previously stated.
Yeah. And as verbally meant, as verbally stated by each member, when each one was asked individually, they all, that's a I don't know what you call it, like a Zoom thing now where everything is, has to be done by
Roll call.
We, we, we did a roll call, we did a roll call vote and each member vocally expressed their opinion, yes or no, on each of the questions.
That's what I was trying to say before I was past my bedtime.
Way, way, way past my bedtime. That's not.
Summary here. Something, an overall summary is here.
Right.
The overall motion.
Overall motion. So Mr. Shaw seconds the overall motion. All those in favor of?
Has to be a roll call.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, of course it does. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Um, I vote no against the denial.
Do you, well, the question is, do you, do you agree or not agree that the board voted on the four questions the way, way it did? You, you don't really get a chance to re, revote on the, the denial. We're, we're, we're voting, we're voting on what we said individually.
I thought we were voting on whether or not you wanted.
No, we're voting to deny.
You, you made a motion to deny the rehearing request, and I think we're voting on that. Yay or? Okay, fine. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're voting to deny the rehearing request. Fine. So Ms. McKay votes no. Okay, Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the denial.
Okay, Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the rehearing request. The denial of the rehearing request.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial of the rehearing.
And Mr., I, Mr. Lionel also vote in favor of denying the rehearing request. So that's three to two. The denial passes. So I think that's the procedure. Do we get that right?
I think that's, that's cleaner.
Yes, okay. So.
Then we do have an agenda for the next meeting.
We do.
I think.
I did send it to you guys.
Yes, I got it. I got it. And did, did people? Yes, a lot of cases.
Yeah. Hopefully they'll move at a little quicker pace than.
We will, we won't discuss any of them for right now. Although I'm sure you'd love to talk about at least two of these, but we'll pass on that for now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Burn that bridge when we get to it.
Okay, does anybody see any regional impact for these? For the agenda items?
I do not.
Okay. Let's see, that was Mr. Shaw, right? Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Courier?
No.
Ms. McKay? Ms. McKay, do you see any regional impact?
You lose your audio, Ms. McKay?
She can't hear us.
She hears us.
Hello? Would you sign language, Kate? I don't know, but I, I also see no regional impact, so I don't know what happened with her. She turned off her speaker. Uh, okay.
I, Jer, she's back.
Ms. McKay, are you back? Mary Ellen? Hello, Mary Ellen?
Well, we still have a quorum. We should just.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have four saying there's no regional impact.
Okay, so we have no regional impact. Okay, so we have minutes from March 23. Does anybody have any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
So moved second. Mr., moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Boucher. Okay, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of accepting the minutes.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor. We might have just gotten.
Oh, no, you know what I did? I apologize. I just looked over. I have a Bose sound system.
And you turned it off.
See this little round disc?
Yeah.
I hit it and it was orange. I apologize.
Okay.
You didn't miss much.
I was wondering why I saw all your little mouths are moving and I couldn't figure out what was going on.
We're in the middle of a motion for the minutes.
Yes, we're, we're.
We're voting in minutes.
We're voting to approve the minutes. Do you approve the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I also approve the minutes. So it's five to nothing. Minutes are approved. Okay.
Who, I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Uh, Mr. Shaw, Rob made the motion and JP seconded it.
All right. Got it. Thanks.
And now we have, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Hardly.
Thank you.
Well, 12:02, you made it to tomorrow.